Welcome to the July 21st meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero. Here. The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Drayman and the invocation by the Reverend Caroline Smith.
If you'd please stand and place your right hand over your heart and follow after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Lord God, as we gather here this evening, we cast our eyes on you. We give ourselves to you. We look to you to show us how to live, how to pray, and how to serve. We cast our eyes on you, oh Lord. We give ourselves to you. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we seek to serve the community of Glendale. Help us to make the right decisions for the benefit of our community, not for just a few, but for all. May you increasingly multiply our efforts. May we, in seeing you, follow you. May your glory be revealed in us. Amen.
Amen.
Will we have your report?
The agenda for the July 21, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 16th, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next? Mr. Mayor, if I can, maybe before we get into the presentations and appointments, a couple of changes on your agenda we'd like to note for anybody that might be here on them. The first is Item 8C, which is the MOU with the Glendale City Employees Association. We'd like to take off calendar. That's 8C. And then on Item 9A, which is the public hearing on Brand Boulevard Landscape Assessment District, we'd like to hold that matter over to next week. Correct, Steve? Next week? Without further notice.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, in order to make sure we have a complete record on that, we can either do it now, out of order, or when it comes up, we read it into the record fully and adopt a motion to continue it because this is a public hearing and involves an assessment district.
All right, thank you. Next?
Next are presentations and appointments, and we have the agenda preview of the meeting of July 28, 2009.
Mr. McFaul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, July 28th, on the Glendale Housing Authority, there is one business item. The Acting Director of Community Development Housing will be providing a report on the Quality Life Indicators project update. Following that would be the Redevelopment Agency, also, starting at 2:30. There is one item, the Director of Development Services, providing a report on the financing strategy for the Central Glendale Redevelopment Project area, and this is motion authorizing preparation of documents for bond issuance, which there may be some more discussion on later. There'll be a joint meeting of the Redevelopment Agency and the Housing Authority. This will be a report regarding the 2010 through 14 implementation plan, housing implementation plan. At evening at 6 o'clock, the Glendale, the regular Glendale Council meeting, and there's a few items to note. The first action item is a director from, a report from the Director of Public Works regarding the State Route 710 Gap Closure Project, and this will be requesting council to give direction on the State 710 Gap Closure Project. Then there'll be three hearings. The first, the city attorney will be presenting a report, the proposed amendment and reinvestment of Series 2005 B1 note, Verdugo Hills Hospital Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 1994, in a principal amount up to $7 million. Next, the fire chief will be presenting the weed abatement charges for 2008/9. And then lastly, the Director of Planning with the Glendale Registry of Historic Resources listing a Mills Act contract for a property specifically at 1334 Rossmoyn Avenue. That would be all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll actually, City Council comments, so we'll start with Mr. Drayman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'd like to talk about two items. One is last week's Glendale History Challenge. We had a winner. We had a winner. And the winner is Shirley Louie. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. This was the photograph, and she identified it correctly as Snowbird Ice Cream, which was the original precursor of Baskin Robbins and the very first location, which is in Adams Square. And 1945 was the year of this photograph. So that is a piece of our own city's history, and she will be winning a $25 gift certificate to the Cheesecake Factory. Oh, excuse me, that's, yes, the Cheesecake Factory, that's correct. And we'll be getting that out to her. So we appreciate her taking care of, taking care of the right answer for us. And so those of you know what we do with the Glendale History Challenge is each week we try to show a historic photograph of the city of Glendale from years gone by, and we ask the public to either call in or email in after the council meeting is over to give us their best guess of what the photograph is and when it was taken. And then they win a $25 gift certificate to one of our local restaurants. However, having said that, we're going to take a hiatus this week because of the length of tonight's agenda. The second item, Mr. Mayor, that I have relates to the opening of the new community garden on Monterey Road. This last Saturday, it was, we were represented on the council by Mayor Quintero and Councilmember Najarian and myself. It was a terrific presentation that was done there and a turnout by about 100 people altogether, including city staff that were there. And I would point out, this community garden is the first community garden in the state of California to be irrigated with reclaimed water. So it's one of a kind also. And so we're very excited about that. And I'm sure some of my colleagues will also talk about it, but I wanted to report that it's off and running officially now, and more on the way. More community gardens on the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, if we can, I'd like to ask that we adjourn tonight's council meeting in the memory of those families who lost their loved ones in the flight bound for Air Van Armenia. 168 passengers went down. I attempted to find out how many families in Glendale lost loved ones. We know there were some. I've not been able to get a list, but it really hit home for this community, so I think it would be very right of us to adjourn their memory.
Very good idea. Ms. Friedman.
I'll let someone else talk about Cruise Night. I will admit that I did do air guitar onstage, very briefly.
Every car on stage?
Let someone else give a rundown. I wanted to talk about what I did on Friday and Saturday, which was that I represented Glendale and Sacramento at the Summit of State Governance and Fiscal Reform, which was held by the Cities and Counties-Schools Partnership. This was a group made up of the League of Cities being represented by elected officials from all over the state of California, along with some senior staff, city managers, a lot of city council members and mayors, as well as members of the school board from across the state. There were in all about 550 participants. The topic of the seminar, and this was the first time they've ever had the full meeting of this group, and the topic was rebuilding California from the ground up. And the reason that we had this meeting was with a general agreement amongst these hundreds of people who were there from all over the state, that the governance of California is broken at this point, that we've had a problem that's been building over the years, being held from year to year, a fiscal problem, a problem of accountability, and of the operation of government that we're seeing now come to a crisis in terms of the state's own budget and how it's about to affect all of the city budgets. And over the weekend, we tried to come up with different solutions that, over time, will probably turn into legislation sponsored by the school boards and by the League of Cities and others, to try to help to deal with this problem. And I'll be talking more about this over the next few weeks. But the bottom line is that the budget that's being adopted currently in Sacramento is going to have tremendous negative impacts on our city and on all of the other cities in the state. And there was uniform agreement in Sacramento from amongst the cities and the school boards that the people who are best able to respond to the needs of constituents has not been Sacramento, but it's been your local government. Unlike Sacramento, we have a level of transparency through the Brown Act, through televised meetings and open meetings that they don't have in Sacramento. Your city here in Glendale has acted responsibly over many years, having a balanced budget every year, whereas Sacramento has not. And now, in order to try to get themselves out of this financial black hole that they've created, or that's been created, they're going to be taking money from this city and from all of the other cities and basically dragging us down with them. And unfortunately, there'll be large cuts that will have to be made here in Glendale and other places over the next several years if Sacramento can't get its house in order that will look possibly to the city like cuts that are being made from your council, but they're not. They're cuts that are being handed down from Sacramento because of their inability to deal with their own budget issues. So it's a real crisis. It's very serious. I'm sure city manager can tell us more if he chooses tonight or in the future, but you will be hearing more about this. It was a very interesting seminar. In some ways, it was very empowering because all of the cities are very united in their desire to come together, to work together on this issue, to try to regain local control and local oversight, and to try to help Sacramento with their problems as well. So there'll be more on this in the upcoming months. And I'll be trying to do my work with the League of Governments and independent cities to represent Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Ms. Najarian.
Thank you. And what I would like, hopefully the city manager has some time and we won't violate the Brown Act, but I would like him to address this issue. And it's important that we talk about it now because the budget, the state budget is not yet adopted, has not been voted on. There's at least a few days to go, and I, my latest intel from Sacramento indicates that there are some cracks in the coalition that came together to pass that budget due to partially a lot of pushback from the local governments and the schools. So please, everyone can write their, write our assemblyman and our state senator and let them know that the, specifically from our viewpoint, the cuts to our local government and our redevelopment funds is going to be devastating, and it's going to be, it's going to be felt almost in every corner of the city. And it is not too late. We can let our elected representatives know that is not acceptable and that they're, as Councilmember Friedman said, they're passing their problem and their inability and their dysfunction in the true sense of the word on to the cities that have been, with the limited tools that we have, we've been dealing with our issues as best we can. The next thing I'd like to ask from either our Director of Public Works or from our building official, if he's listening or if he gets the message, there has been a advancement of the Senate bill relating to gray water usage and the building codes, which relaxes what was previously a rather onerous requirement for undergrounding and all that, and makes it much more, much more feasible for single-family users to make use of gray water. So if you could give us an update on that, and perhaps, not necessarily now, but when you have the info, and let us know what we need to do, if we need to adopt the amendments to the building code, or whether it's automatically incorporated into, into our codes and what it means for the people.
I'll definitely follow up with the report.
And the last, last item is, the name Dutton was raised last week, and Mr. City Attorney, I'd like a report and find out what has happened to that issue. I understand it is not resolved. And we spent a lot of time, a lot of pain, for many, many meetings, hours, many of us, it was a very divisive issue, and I'm dismayed to hear that it is not resolved. What we all hope for is that it was put to bed and, and out of our agenda, so to speak. So please, if you could let us know where that is, we can hopefully not deal with it any longer and make sure that the steps are being taken, that it remains resolved.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I will provide you with a memorandum outlining where, what the status is. Let me tell you, I'm somewhat dismayed as well. It was put to bed in terms of administrative process, but then we have to go through the legal process through the courts to ultimately get that portion of the property demolished. And we'll make sure we get you a memo on the status of that and where we are.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Najarian. I'll start by talking about the community gardens, just an incredible event, very, very So the community gardens, basically, just so people understand, there was an empty lot next to the freeway for years and years and years. We've all driven by it numerous times, and it is now blooming with flowers, vegetables, incredibly beautiful tomatoes, all of it done on city land and basically by Coalition for Green Glendale, a nonprofit, and volunteers. And the city staff helped, but it was basically the volunteers that did it. And one of the main volunteers was a local landscape architect, Yom Le Moine, who spent countless hours and helped, along with the Coalition for Green Glendale, helped put this together. And so I want to thank the entire coalition. And he's a French national, and his, the highlight of the event for me was that, to thank him for all of his good work, they gave him some champagne from Spain, from the Catalan region of Spain, which is obviously the best champagne they could find. So anyway, I just had a, had a great time pointing that out to him and the crowd. And Cruise Night was also very, very well-attended. We all had a wonderful time there. Over 400 cars, thousands, tens of thousands of people. All of the restaurants were packed. Those few merchants that decided to keep their stores open, I noticed there were people inside shopping. It's just a great economic event, and as far as I know, once again, there were literally nowhere rest, there's never any problem at this event. Tens of thousands of people, and we just don't have any issues at all. Very good event. Then on a sad note, I attended the funeral of Lance Corporal Pete Flores, who attended all of the local schools, and there was a rosary and so forth for him on Friday night, very well-attended. He had lots of friends in the area and relatives. And the, I want to thank the Glendale PD and the LAPD for escorting the body from the airport to Glendale. And then finally, as the city manager will point out, there is a possibility that we will lose, or the certainty that we will lose millions of dollars if this budget passes. So in spite of all the years that Glendale has maintained a fiscally prudent decision-making process, always doing things that we can pay for or can bond at low rates, it looks like the state will be basically taking our money. So I'd like to have the city manager just kind of give the public an idea of how the situation looks at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I'm sure you meant they presented him with a bottle of the finest sparkling wine they could find.
That's right.
Couldn't be champagne.
It's actually called Cabah.
Mr. Mayor, I'll try and put some numbers to the general descriptions that Councilmembers Friedman and Najarian have referenced. I spent this morning, frankly, as the numbers began to filter in from various sources, keeping in mind that the state legislature doesn't have the same open meeting requirements that you do here. So as usually happens in these situations, the state legislature, Assembly, and Senate wrestled for many, many months with both last year's budget and this year's budget to no avail. So the job of finding a plan that'll balance a budget invariably falls to what's called the Big Five, the leaders in both, from both parties in the Assembly and the Senate and the governor's office. And as news reports have indicated, they have been holed up for the last several weeks trying to hammer out a plan. Particularly aggravating this morning was a picture on the front page of the LA Times, where the governor and three of the Big Five are shown smiling, shaking hands, and patting each other on the back for a job well done. My view is, this is a disaster for local government. To put some numbers on, on what this is all about, we had heard over the past several months that there were a number of, number of alternatives the state was looking to, to what they call "share the pain" or "partner with local government." That's a euphemism for "we balance our budget at the local level." You've had to make serious, serious cuts in programs. You've had to look for different ways to do business to make ends meet and stay within the means that we have. So partnering and sharing the pain is a euphemism for the state not being able to do the same thing at their level, and instead now reaching down during the worst of times for cities and counties and schools and taking additional resources away from us. I will tell you, I've been in the business long enough to have experienced post Prop 13, the dot-com bust and the recession of the '90s and the minor downturn in the '80s. We seem to do it about every 10 years. And post Prop 13 and the downturn of the '90s were disasters for local government. And in '93, '94, Glendale, while it was trying to balance its budget with a 20% loss in sales tax revenues as a result of that downturn, the state took $4.6 million in property tax revenues that they've yet to return to us, and that's been taken away every year with the growth. What they propose in this budget makes that pale by comparison. To put some numbers on it, the budget proposal includes a two-year takeaway of redevelopment agency resources totaling $1.7 billion, with $1.35 billion of that occurring in this current fiscal year, which means that by May of the upcoming calendar year, by May 10, we will be obligated to write a check to the state of California for roughly $9.2 million. Then, year two, which for us would be the 10-11 fiscal year, an additional $350 million or $2.3 million for our redevelopment agency. Probably as disconcerting as the direct dollar take, and I will tell you, that is currently in the neighborhood of 50% of our reserves within the redevelopment agency, reserves that are actually dedicated for identified projects. But just as disconcerting is the implications of the takeaway and the continued dysfunctional nature of the state's budget on the bond market for redevelopment agency bonds. As you know, our capital improvement program depends on the sale of redevelopment agency bonds, with the use of those funds to support local critical public projects like the ARC, renovation of the main library, Central Avenue Street rehabilitation, and the likes. Roughly $24 million. Right now, the bond market won't accept redevelopment agency bonds. We have canceled the meeting with you next week to have you approve our going-to-market because if there are any buyers of those bonds, it'll probably be at interest rates that we wouldn't want to pay. Instead, we'll use that time to get further into some of the implications for the redevelopment agency and the city of the state's proposed budget. But that can have very serious implications on our capital improvement program for the upcoming year. Second in the list of three is a take of gas tax revenues. Cities have, since the beginning of time, received a share of the taxes collected on gasoline in the state of California, and those monies are restricted to be used for the maintenance and reconstruction of our street system locally. I will tell you, the vast majority of cities can't make ends meet even with those funds. That's why we see California streets in the conditions that they are. Glendale has historically supplemented that money with general fund money to maintain at least a better level of street maintenance than you'll find in most cities. This would take away those funds for what they say is a two-year borrowing, but as we know, once the state takes away money, it very seldom returns. This would likely mean, without the use of our street gas tax reserves, and we have considerable reserves, there are about $17 million, in the absence of reserves, it would mean literally an end to our street maintenance and reconstruction program. With the reserves we have, we can probably continue for about two more years at the level that we currently have, but in the absence of that, we'll see a significant reduction in street maintenance. And lastly, what's been called the Proposition 1A borrowing, or as we've talked about before, a borrowing under Proposition 1A of general fund resources for Glendale, about $4 million. So all total, if you include gas tax, the Prop 1A borrowing, and this year's takeaway for redevelopment agencies, total of about $16 to $17 million being taken away at a time that we've had to lay off staff, cut back programs, and look to privatization over the last two years to make ends meet. I mentioned to a reporter with the LA Times that Sacramento has become a big black hole into which they're sucking up every other level of government and taking this all down with them. In addition to that, the state budget, we'll talk about more next week, I believe, is peppered with one-time structures to help shore up their budget and revenues that aren't going to materialize this year or next year, and likely before the print is even dry, or the ink is even dried on the printing of their budget, they will be somewhere between $8 and $10 billion, that's with a B, billion dollars, out of whack. So we're going to see the same routine happen for the balance this year and into next year. We have met with both of our state legislators, Mr. Krikorian and Ms. Liu. We've completely informed them of the implications of this takeaway on our programs and the serious nature of it for our residents, and I understand the package is planned to be presented to them and their colleagues in the Assembly and the Senate this next Thursday. So we'll be watching very closely their vote.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. An excellent presentation on the state of affairs. Next, please.
Item 5, our consent, 5, 8 through F are consent items, and they are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before the motion is proposed.
Mayor, I'd like to move the consent calendar at 5.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At item 6 are oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, we break oral communications into two segments. There's no one interested in making presentations, so we'll move to the next item.
Item 7A, adoption of ordinances. Ordinance, there's one ordinance adding Chapter 5.96 to the Glendale Municipal Code relating to commercial special events. It was offered by Councilmember Weaver on 7/14/09.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, pursuant to your direction last week, I sent out email notices to three chambers of commerce, the, I'm sorry, multiple members, because I didn't have an email address for certain recognized merchants associations, so I was able to, with the assistance of Development Services, come up with the names of a number of the members and sent out email notices to each of them, informing them that this item was going to be before the city council this evening for consideration for adoption. I also, in that email, provided a brief summary of the ordinance. I should point out that we have now received, and I presented to you, two letters, one from the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce dated July 15th, requesting a six-week delay in consideration of this so that they can check with their member businesses and determine impacts, as well as a letter dated July 20th of this year from the Chamber, Glendale Chamber of Commerce, requesting a one-month delay in the adoption of this ordinance or consideration of the adoption of this ordinance, so that they too could discuss with the various business groups that they represent, maybe who they believe may or may not be affected by this, and to express their concerns, if any. Lastly, I should point out two minor changes to the ordinance. The word should have been "chapter" because we were amending a certain chapter of the municipal code, and it stated "charter." And so the ordinance has been changed now to reflect the proper word in two locations, one in the title, so it's now "Chapter 5.96," and also at the, I believe it's the last sentence of the ordinance, "Chapter 5.96." I am available certainly to provide you with, once again, details of the ordinance and its impacts, what it will do, and the like, at your pleasure.
All right, Mr. Weaver.
All right, Mr. Weaver.
Before I move for the adoption of the revised ordinance, the feedback I'm getting, the concern seems to be from parties that don't quite understand, no group has veto power. That seems to be the big crux of the matter. It's saying that the BIDs and other certain groups can comment, just like the fire, the police, and every other city department does. City clerk puts it all together, submits it to the city manager who makes the decision. And once a decision's made, the party that feels they've been offended can appeal it to the city council. But there is no such thing as veto power on any event in this city. And with that, I would like to move 8A.
That's 7, 7A.
I mean, excuse me, 7A.
Second.
As amended to.
As amended.
Change, revise charter to chapter.
Okay, are there any comments? Okay, well, as Mr. Weaver mentioned, Councilmember Weaver mentioned, I also had a number of people that spoke to me, chamber members for the most part, concerned that somehow the merchants in the different neighborhoods in Glendale would have veto power over an event, and that is not the case. But what is important is that we do take into consideration the different neighborhood business groups, whether it's Adams Square, Montrose, Kenneth Village. We get input from them and try to, to listen to what these business people have to say about what's taking place in their, in their neighborhood. But ultimately, it would be up to the city manager to make the determination, and if appealed, it'll be up to the city council. So I think it's a change in the law that's long overdue. No other comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Item 8A, Director of Human Resources regarding proposed ordinance for introduction to amend the salary ordinance for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the city of Glendale for their compensation. 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction for the GMA classification. 8A2 is an ordinance for introduction for hourly classifications.
Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 8A, or.
Introduce.
Introduce the ordinance at A, A1 and 2.
All right, the ordinance has been introduced. Next, please.
At.
Excellent.
8B, Director of Human Resources regarding memorandum of understanding between the city and Glendale Management Association. At 8B1 is a resolution approving and adopting the memorandum of understanding between the city of Glendale and Glendale Management Association on behalf of general non-sworn managers commencing July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010.
All right, do have one card from Mike Mohill.
Why do we have a city managers' association in the first place? You know, in private industry, managers do not belong to a, to a union. But in the city of Glendale, they do. And what might I ask is the reason for them wanting to join a union? It's obvious. In number there's strength, and strength there's power, and in there's power, there's money. And that's what it's all about, is money. What do we, what can we do to dissolve this union in the first place? And every union we have in the city of Glendale, the unions are now called the robber barons of the 1920s and 30s, when we had Rockefeller, Carnegie, we had the sweatshops. Now, the taxpayers are the union people who cried for unions back in the 20s and 30s. The taxpayers are being forced every day to go without so that the unions can get more and more money. Written the Glendale News Press today, yesterday, how the Glendale Public Employees Union are going to negotiate with a IB, what's International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Why? Money. Again, it's all about money. And unfortunately, all my five councilmen have received money in the past from the unions. So therefore, you become beholden to them. It's a vicious circle. I wish the public would one day say, you know what, let's have an open shop. By having an open shop, the people will gain back their rights. There's almost 20 percent unemployment in the county of Los Angeles, and here in Glendale, they want higher salaries. They won't negotiate the union. We want more money. You know what? I'm on Social Security. I want more money, too. We don't even, I don't even talk about the CalPERS account that the city's obligated to talk about. CalPERS wants 7.7 percent of their money and their investments. I don't get 7 percent of my investment. I've lost money in my 401K. Things have come around. Now, the union is called the robber barons, the thieves of the 20s and 30s, when the, when the movie like Norma Rae, the sweatshops, where the workers had no rights. Mr. Quintero, my father was a union man, carpenter. I remember when my father made $10,000 one year, and my mother was so excited. And he retired with a small, small pension.
Thank you, Ms. Mohill. Okay, any, Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 8B1 with a comment. I'd like to thank very much the GMA, as along with the fire, that agreed to 0 percent increase in salary adjustments, considering what we're going through. And I'm simply sorry that the GCA, which also, we had proposed a 0 percent, and I think it was going to fly through, I'd like to throw into those three associations, not unions, their associations have been since the 1920s or 30s. And it's really sad that, because some of us received contributions, we're automatically accused of owing to the associations. You know, being accused of something like that, it's hard to disprove. You can say it has no influence on you, but those that want to believe otherwise will not listen to you. Oh, yeah, we know, you got the money, so you are doing it. How do you disprove it? You can't. And the accusation comes up every time on situations like this, that we owe ourselves to the associations. I know I got elected in 2007. I did not have endorsement from management, from fire, or police, and I'm sitting here today. So much for needing to necessarily have the support of the associations to get elected to a council by you people. So that's my motion on 8B1.
Mr. Starbird, did you have?
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, I think it appropriate to point out that this is not about more money. This is about no money, no increases for the management positions covered by this. The only thing this provides for is a contract to continue the current terms of our agreement and for a relatively small pickup, an annual cost of $37,000 for increased health insurance. I will note that in March, this very same group had a right to an increase that would cost the city about $105,000 that they gave up at that time as well. So this is not about more money, this is about no cost to the city.
Just need a second.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
I did. I did. I just also wanted to add, since it, since the comment came up, may surprise some to know, perhaps even some of my colleagues, that in the two times I have run for office, I have never been endorsed by the Glendale Firefighters Association, and I have never been endorsed by the GMA, and I have never been endorsed by the GCEA. I have been endorsed by the Glendale Police Officers Association on both occasions. The GMA did later contribute some funds to my campaign account, and as a result, I recused myself from voting on their contract in 2007, or the salary raises, rather, in the last go-around. In any case, I just wanted to put that out there for the record.
Okay, well, in my case, I'm just surprised that Mr. Mohill is speaking disparagingly of the Rockefellers and Carnegie's, and I thought they were your kind of people, Mr. Mohill. They're always for the, for the top, for the top dog, so I don't know. I understand. But anyway, roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Item 8C has been taken off calendar.
Yeah.
Item 8. I'm sorry? Okay.
Yes, 8C is off calendar.
Okay. 8D, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding amendment of Sections 2.72.140, 13.08.140, 13.12.060, 13.44.480, and 13.44.500 of the GMC 1995 regarding the payment and enforcement of water rates and electrical rates. At 8D1 is an ordinance for introduction defining theft of water and electric service and providing for the recovery of fees and costs associated with such theft.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, I go to Glenn Steiger, General Manager of GWP. Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council. I come before you tonight to propose amendments to an existing code relating to the unauthorized use of water and electric. You may recall, a number of months ago, we presented the GWP strategic plan to you. Within that plan, we noted that we have identified a fairly significant potential of theft of service, both within the, the electric and the water utilities. We have, since that time, ramped up our enforcement efforts, and since that time, have identified 22 cases of theft of service, have billed over $22,000, have collected $21,000 in that very short period of time. And that's just with an increased awareness of theft of service. We will continue to, to ramp up our efforts over the course of the rest of the year till the point where we have a full-blown procedure in identifying and understanding what theft of service truly is. Tonight, we come before you to, to modify existing codes, really to define unauthorized use, theft of service, and meter tampering, and to identify and specify various costs that GWP may recover as a result of these acts, including un-metered usage, damaged equipment, and investigative costs. We also, in, within the scope of these amendments, are proposing a, an avenue for appeals for potential theft of service participants. And within that method of appeals, we've proposed two options. Essentially, we are proposing that appeals go to the GWP Commission, and we are now requesting your opinion on rendering the decision by the GWP Commission to be final, or option two, to have it further reviewed by city council. And that's strictly for theft of service. I just want to make a comment that our next item has to do with Smart Grid, and this is fairly, fairly important to the implementation of our Smart Grid in that, as we move forward, we know we are going to be seeing additional cases, in fact, in many cases, significant cases, of theft of service, and with the implementation of Smart Grid. So with this, it gives us the ability to identify, define, and act.
So, Mr. Steiger, the public should understand that we're going to catch, or we catch someone stealing essentially from the other ratepayers, stealing from the city, basically stealing electrical power, and we're going to give them the ability to appeal to the water and power?
Well, we, we assume that they, that some will, yes. That they'll, they'll say that they were accused unfairly.
When, when our technicians go out and actually, and that's something, I guess, under law, the law we have to do.
Because essentially, we're going to be assessing them a significant monetary penalty, and as a result, they're entitled to procedural due process. Even if the evidence, in our view, is 110 percent ironclad, they still have a right to be heard.
Well, let's hope they're too embarrassed to actually appear before the cameras and try to.
And alternatively, I might add, that depending upon the nature of the theft and the evidence we have, they may be appealing a criminal charge filed by the district attorney's office.
Right, that's what, that was going to be my next question. If the financial sum is large enough, then.
Could very well be.
Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Steiger, I see you have a tip line set up, and have you thought about offering rewards for those who, for information leading to the.
Rest in conviction?
I guess, not necessarily the arrest, but the termination and then.
The culmination, basically.
Culmination of, of a theft of service.
And right now, we are still putting together those types of processes. As I mentioned, we're continuing to ramp up our efforts, so we're looking at those kinds of incentives, both for the public and for our own, for employees that find theft of service. Because in some cases, it takes quite a bit of investigation and understanding. We, we see some pretty sophisticated theft of service, so yes, those are some of the options we're looking at.
So what also you referred to is, as we're going through on the next item, the, the smart meters, there's going to be a technician there actually removing and doing some rewiring at that point. I mean, a much closer inspection than, than just reading a meter.
Right.
That you feel that will uncover some previously undetected theft.
I would, I would hope not, but the reality of it is, we will, yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Steiger, do you have any possible idea, the monetary loss to the city on an annualized basis on the theft?
Well, given the losses, and this is the way we, we calculate, we, we know what our system losses are. Basically, that means what, what we know is generated and what we know is actually billed for, metered, we expect, and we know that the, the percentage losses are fairly high at this point, which gives us every reason to believe there's quite a bit of theft of service. We've estimated approximately $11 million.
Annualized?
Yes.
Jeez.
Which I might add is about a penny on our electric rate, which is somewhere between 7 and 10 percent.
Has been going on for years.
If we could reduce our rates if we could catch all of this. That's a big impact.
State takes 9.2, and we can get $11 million back somehow.
And this is part of your strategic plan that you proposed several month or so ago about reducing our rates over the next five years to less than Edison's rate, correct?
This, this is one of the pieces of that reduction, correct?
Any other comments?
You want a motion?
Yes.
Oh, another interjection. I'll introduce the, the ordinance at 8D1.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Thank you, Mr. Steiger. Next, please.
Excuse me. I have to ask which, which option on the appeals process. I apologize.
For the appeal.
I'm for leaving it with the GWP Commission.
Okay, with that.
What was that?
GWP.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
GWP.
Yes.
It would also seem to me, once they're in the public view, on the public stage, could we run the proceedings of the hearing on Channel 6?
If that's, if that's the choice.
If they've got the guts.
At this point, all commission meetings are televised. There's no reason to not televise.
Yes, they are.
Let's keep running the.
All commission meetings are televised.
It'll be interesting to see who the first appellant is.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of the big ones.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger.
Thank you.
Next, please.
At item 8E, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding implement advanced metering infrastructure slash meter, meter data management system for electric and water meters. At 8E1 is a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Iron Ink, Itron Ink, pardon me, to provide material, equipment, and related needs in, in amount not to exceed $28,563,742.42, with a general reserve for contingencies in the amount of $5,712,748.42, plus an additional reserve for contingencies in the amount of $400,000 for an optical wireless backhaul. 8E2 is a motion authorizing the city manager. 8E2 is a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into a one-year agreement with Itron Inc. to provide software maintenance for AMI/MDMS in an amount not to exceed $238,142.24.
Okay, Mr. Steiger, we have many people who are here tonight for a public hearing on a development project, so if you could condense the presentation, I think what's most important is that the public understand what it is that we're about to do in terms of upgrading their electrical service, water, et cetera, and I'd sort of like to limit it to that, and then if there's questions from the City Council.
Will do. And Mayor Quintero, I appreciate that, and we will make this as expeditious as possible. I'd like to just begin by saying, this is the largest single project that GWP will embark upon over the next two years. It will encompass both electric and water, so it is all-encompassing for GWP. We have been working on this project in terms of developing it with your approval for the last two years, and I am very, very pleased tonight to be able to bring this to you for final execution. And I'm going to just run through these. You can keep going.
Execution.
Yeah. Next one, and the next one. Just to... And I'm going to run through these slides because... Whoop, whoop. Can you go back? Just so that you underst... Whoop, go backwards. There we go. What we're doing tonight lays the foundation for the Smart Grid in Glendale. And this is what we are proposing tonight, and this essentially is the AMI piece, which is the metering piece of Smart Grid. And this is the part that we need to implement first, which creates the automated metering plus the foundation or the platform, the digital platform, for Smart Grid. And essentially, what it does, and this is a pictorial of it, it takes information from the meter, and we see the OpenWay meter, and collects and can ultimately collect data, both from the utility and from the customer, in order to allow us to provide a better rate structure, intelligent rates, to incentivize behavioral change for customers to be able to understand how to conserve more efficiently. It allows for additional in-home devices and tools, and it allows customers to see through displays and portals exactly what they're doing at any given time in terms of energy and water usage. For the future, as we see it, we start today with metering, as you can see in the lower left-hand side, and as we move forward over the next few years, it will include the integration of our renewables, our green initiatives. It will allow for customer awareness through in-home displays of how much energy is being used at any given time. It will allow for direct load control where appropriate, price response from customers, again, as customers will be able to see how much they're using, what it costs at any given time, energy management for our larger customers, and ultimately, things like plug-in cars and plug-in vehicles. And I'd like to turn it over to Craig Keenan, who's responsible for this project.
My name is Craig Keenan. I'm the PBC Marketing Manager, and I'm willing to go as... How far do you want me to go on this?
Well, once again, I mean, I just want the public to understand what it is that we're doing here. It's positive, and we don't even know about Itron and so forth.
The basic system is it's smart meters with large storage. They can store the data. There's two-way communications, remote disconnect and reconnect. We have a meter data management system. Basically, it's a computer system that manage all this data that's going to be coming from electric meters and water meters, and put it in a meaningful form and integrate it with our billing system, and additional Smart Grid systems like outage management, load control. It'll provide customers with the data they need to make intelligent decisions on water and energy use. They'll have access to the data over the Internet. I think the paper said it would give Internet access. It's not going to give you Internet access. If you have Internet access, you'll have access to the data many different ways, through Google or things that we have. This is just a look at how it works. We have the meter data management system at the utility. You've got the Itron meter at the home. You have the various appliances and things that'll be coming into the marketplace, and it communicates over a communication network, which might be cellular technology or wireless RF, or larger RF system. You know, that's just how they can... The data goes from house to house and back to us. The benefits: improved information, improved customer service, managed revenue services, environmental stewardship, foundation for the Smart Grid. We could go through these. We already went through... When we did our business case, this contract is in line with the business case. We presented a few, I think about four or five months ago. The business case was positive. The RFP process, we've been going through this since last October. We can keep going here. This is...
Mr. Mayor, let me ask you, what's the implementation phase for this? How long will it take to implement the smart meter sample electrical?
22 to 25 months. We'll start in the next month or so. We'll spend about six months doing design early or late next year, early to 2011, or 20... No. Early 2010, we'll do a proof of concept, and then it's putting the meters out. We'll be done by early 2011. 22 months, 22,000 hours.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions, Mr. Najarian?
I have several questions. Number one, it's a significant investment. How certain are we that this technology is not going to be obsolete in a few years, like some of our other... There's hundreds of examples of obsolete, the Betamax or the, et cetera.
The Itron system is... They're the largest supplier of this technology in North America, if not the world. Edison is buying this technology. San Diego Gas and Electric, CenterPoint in Texas, DT in Detroit. I know SMUD bought their meter data management system.
If I can to put some numbers to those. Southern California Edison, this year, '09, 4 million meters purchased. San Diego Gas and Electric in '08, 2.3 million meters purchased. It's a big company with big capacity. And doing some research, companies like Southern California Edison, San Diego Gas and Electric, all turning to Itron for meters of very large numbers. So there's a lot of confidence being placed in this firm. We're not alone at all on this.
Okay, my next question is, the software maintenance fee seems pretty high, almost a quarter of a million dollars. And is that a yearly?
It's yearly, but the price is fixed. It can only go up at the...
5%.
5% or the...
CPI.
CPI.
Is that normal? I mean, is that...
Yeah, that's pretty...
What do we get for software maintenance?
We get the...
A few technicians or...
No, we get Itron's full support in updating the technology and ensure it works. They're very... They look at you as a partner. They want you to have a system that continues to operate over the projected lifespan, and...
Are we going to realize any cost savings in this? Are we going to not need our team of meter readers?
The meter readers will be retrained and put in other jobs, or they would, you know, through attrition and things like that, we will have cost savings there. There's cost savings associated with shifting the load from peak periods, where it's the most expensive, to off-peak, middle of the night, where it's really cheap. There's tremendous cost savings. I think the business case projected... I think Jim's looking at that.
Yeah, the business case projected costs of $25.4 million, benefits of $31 million from the system.
And I should add that the business case did... This contract includes the cost of the water meters, and that business case did not, so you know, this contract is actually cheaper than the business case projected, so...
The rates that we charge are now going to be fully adjustable and dynamic?
That's... That is the idea, that you will, over time, develop rates that are based on your actual cost to generate or purchase the power in the market. And then that way, it gives people more control. If electricity's $0.02 at night, plus whatever your costs are, if you can get people to move there, you know, it's a good deal for them and for us.
But those rate structures that all need to come back to the City Council for approval at the time that they're ready to implement, right?
And would you ever see the situation, the scenario, where we become so attuned to the rates, the rate structure is so advantageous that we would not need to maintain one or more of our peaker units? Or is that just wishful thinking?
That's getting a little bit out of my area, but that's the goal of Smart Grid, is to defer or defer the need to build more capacity for the peak load. Because usually, your whole system is designed to hit that $300 or $400 in the summer, and then it sits around. If we can chop the top off of that peak and get people to move at night, which this is one of the benefits that this is going to bring, then you don't have to build those peaker units.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
For the benefit of the public, could you just give a few examples of how an individual person would be able to utilize this system to save money?
Well, they could basically go online and enter through our website and get information on when they're using it, down to 15-minute increments for electricity, or hourly for water to start out. And so they can see when they're using the power. You'll be amazed on how many things in your house are taking and using power that you don't even know about. And anything that has a little red light on it is using power. And I've heard cases where people that have access to this data will go around and start unplugging and turning off these things, and can actually see, you know, the next day or whenever they look again, how they're saving energy just by unplugging what they call these vampire loads and things you leave plugged in, your cell charger, things like this, that are really using a lot of electricity.
So in other cities that have done this, is there any data on what sort of the average savings is for the users? Maybe percentage-wise?
I don't have that off the top of my head on that, but we would expect an area of 10% minimum for somebody who really participates in the program.
For power and water?
Water, we're projecting some significant savings, 10% to 20% by 2020 by implementing this system. Now, part of that will be just the fact of replacing the water meters right now that are 30, 35 years old, and they're, I'm sure, leaking, or they're not keeping track of the usage as good as they were when they were new. Also, people will know if they have leaks, because they can go online, and if they see they have usage in the middle of the night, generally, that means you have a leak, and they don't... So you can save that way, enforcing our water ordinance. We'll know who's watering on Tuesday, Thursday, or Saturday, and what time of day they're watering. So it'll be easy to let them know or encourage them to meet the code and save.
Thank you.
I, at the League of Cities meeting, I actually had an opportunity to talk to the reps from Itron, but more importantly, I had an opportunity... Well, I went to a class, and in that class, listened to people who have done this in Rancho Cucamonga, a number of different Southern California communities. It was just amazing. It was amazing what you can do with these meters, how you can monitor your own electrical usage and water usage and everything else. But there were just tremendous examples, including a community college who reduced their electrical usage and water usage for their football fields and soccer fields and so forth. Just huge... They literally saved millions. So I'm very excited about this technology. I think Itron, for sure, they are the premier company at this point in time. The fact that the other large utilities are going with Itron, I think there'll be that common usage, which I think is a positive, and I'm just very excited about it. I think it's going to be a win for the entire community. And you think you can actually build it out within a couple of years, 22 months or...
Yes.
Whatever? That's fantastic. That's just great. Mr. Drayman.
Well, it's... I'm obviously very glad we're moving in this direction. It's what a number of people in this council have been asking for for some time, and I'm happy to see it's part of the strategic plan, Mr. Steiger. And that, so quickly, as a sitting member of this council, I have the opportunity to vote on moving this forward. I do have a question, though. What about our orphans up in the annex, Glendale Annex, who are not covered by Glendale Water and Power? They receive their water from Crescent Valley Water District, and at this point, aren't even able to take advantage of the more lenient, shall we say, restrictions that Glendale is... We voted on here on the dais, such as Tuesday, what's it, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, 10 minutes per station. They don't get to do that. And I'm getting lots of calls from and emails from folks who are saying, "Our lawns are dying because we're only allowed to... Only allowed to do this twice a week." Are they going to have the opportunity to benefit from the smart meters?
They will on the electric side, because they are electric customers.
Yes.
So the good news is that half of it, which is more than half of their bill, actually, they will participate. On the water side, not right now. We've had discussions in the past about doing something in that regard, but we've not yet been able to bring anything to conclusion. But we are continuing in that...
Any inkling that the Crescent Valley Water District is going to move to smart metering? Anytime soon?
I have no inkling of that, no.
Okay. I don't think the residents up there...
This century.
This century. I don't think the residents up there have an inkling of that either.
Right.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Weaver?
I'll just make the motion, moving 8E1 and 2.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger. Good job. Next, please.
Item 9A is a hearing, Director of Public Works regarding Brand Boulevard Maintenance District Number 1 for fiscal year 2009, 2010. 9A1 is a resolution determining the special assessment rate.
Mr. Starburn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item is to, hopefully, the recommendation is to continue this for one week without further public notice, the July 28th. Some modifications to the resolution that are required.
All right, are we all in agreement, or do we need a motion?
Just either unanimous consent. There's a motion, second unanimous consent. We'll do it.
See unanimous consent will be held over. Next, please.
At item 9B, Director of Planning regarding Appeal of Design Review Board Case Number 2-PDR 2008-073-B, located at 3522 through 3534 Foothill Boulevard. At 9B1 is a resolution adopting a negative declaration. 9B2 is a motion continuing the matter and directing the city attorney to prepare written findings in support of sustaining the DRB's decision to deny the Design Review Board application. 9B3 is a motion continuing the matter and directing the city attorney to prepare written findings in support of reversing the DRB's decision and approving the Design Review Board application.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Friedman.
Mr. Mayor, up until January 30th, 2009, I served on Design Review Board Number 2. I served as a DRB member. When this project came before the board for its preliminary review on July 17th, 2008, I voted along with the other board members to allow the project to proceed for final review, but during that preliminary review, I made numerous comments about the project design. After I resigned from the board, I submitted a written comment letter to the board before its February 12th, 2009, hearing, expressing my reservations and concerns about the project, and recommending that the board return it for redesign. Due to my prior involvement on the board while this application was pending and my public pronouncements on the project, I may be perceived as having a bias in this matter by the applicant, the neighbors, or others in the community. Out of abundance of caution and in the interest of ensuring that the process is free from bias or the appearance of bias, I am recusing myself from this matter and will not participate tonight in the hearing for the decision. So I'm going to recuse myself, but I will be back for the oral communications portion of the evening.
I was going to insist that you come back, Ms. Friedman.
Go have dinner.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman.
I... No. Mr. Weaver just said to me, "You two." But it does relate to that. And, Mr. Mayor, I received contact from several members of the community in the immediate area of the Foothill Builders site. These were people from, I guess I'd characterize, the old... These were people from, I guess I'd characterize the old neighborhood, who know that I grew up on Marianne Street and that my father operated a business for many years in the building directly next door to this site from 1949 to, well, before, it was Glendale Annex. And in any case, that is not a, that does not legally cause me to recuse myself. I have no interest, nor does my family, in that site any longer, nor do I live in that area, nor have I for some time, that immediate neighborhood. So I will not be recusing myself.
I'd like to have everyone interested in speaking submit their cards to speak, or they will not be allowed to speak tonight. Okay. Now, the way this will work is we're going to have the appellant, in this case, the developer and his development team, they will be speaking sequentially, approximately 15 minutes. Now, normally, after the appellant speaks, we allow an equal amount of time for people who are against the project, if there is a group that speaks for the neighbors or a neighborhood association, et cetera. Is there a group here tonight that kind of speaks collectively for the neighborhood? Someone from the Highway Highlands Group or, okay, I don't see anyone who will speak collectively. So what'll happen is the appellant will make his case, and then everyone who requested to speak will be allowed to come to the podium and either speak in favor of the project or speak against the project. And we'd like to have you focus on the technical aspects of the project, the massing, the size, the architecture, et cetera. That's what we'd like to hear tonight. And I will give the speakers at the podium, I have a lot of cards, but this is a very important issue, so I'm going to give you, well, the appellant will be speaking for 15 minutes, so I'll give you, let's call it four, four minutes to speak at the podium. So we're going to be here quite late tonight. If you choose not to use the four minutes, obviously, that's fine. If you want to make your point in one minute, minute and a half, or whatever, that'll work fine.
Did you mean for each, per each speaker?
Yeah, per each speaker. Do we have, can we do it in four minutes?
Put how many minutes you want on here.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, this is a very important issue, so I'm willing to hear from the public, especially since we don't have an organized group that's going to be speaking against the project. All right. So I'll be taking off my coat momentarily.
Don't put us asleep.
We're going to start with the appellant.
Want the staff report first?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's hear from the staff first.
And then open the.
Just trying to move the process along.
Should open the public hearing.
Yeah, and I'll open the public hearing.
Hey, let me go to Ms. Argani, Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Starburt. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this project, as you know, has been through one preliminary review and then two complete Design Review Board meetings. Vilias Amaititis, who's sitting across from me, has been the case planner on this project. She has prepared a presentation to aid her in explaining and focusing only on the very last review that the Design Review Board did, not the previous reviews. The detailed staff report gives a complete account of the previous reviews, so her presentation tonight will only focus on the last one. Thank you.
Which is the project to be located at 3522 through 3534 Foothill Boulevard, otherwise known as the former Foothill Lumber Site. The appellant on record is Martha Patterson, the attorney for GBS III Investments. The owner is GBS III Investments, and the original applicant was Rodney Khan of Khan The first slide shows an aerial photograph of the project site and the adjacent surrounding neighborhood. The site itself consists of two separate parcels, would be 1 and 2, totaling 33,290 square feet. The project site itself features 260 linear feet of frontage along Foothill Boulevard and also features two existing buildings that will be demolished as part of the project. Parcels along Foothill Boulevard are essentially Zone C3, commercial services, whereas the projects to the south and to the north of Foothill Boulevard are zoned R1, single-family residential. The project site slopes from west to east downward approximately 10 feet, as well as from north to south downward approximately 10 feet. This slide shows you the streetscape looking southeast along Foothill Boulevard. The majority of the immediately adjacent structures are 1 and 1 and 1/2 story commercial buildings. You'll notice that the project site is located within the highlighted yellow lines. So essentially, the project would be going within this area right here. The street facade facing Foothill Boulevard, as you see before you, was what was presented to the Designer View Board on April 9th, 2009. Now, this was for the final review. The project consisted of a three-story commercial-built project, approximately 38,500 square feet of occupiable tenant space, 8,200 square feet being along the ground floor, retail, 14,200 square feet being for medical office, and 16,100 square feet for general office use. There are 148 parking spaces proposed on-site that would comply with the code requirement within two levels of subterranean garage. This slide depicts the ground floor, the first floor essentially. Outlined in blue would be the approximately 8,000 square feet proposed on the ground floor for retail use, with at-grade parking shielded behind the building away from Foothill Boulevard. The slide also depicts the adjacent uses, the building outlines. You'll notice to the south or to the rear would be the outlines of the single-family homes, and then adjacent on the sides, the commercial buildings. Here you have the proposed second floor plan. This particular slide depicts the setbacks and stepbacks shown from the first building floor plan. And now the proposed third floor, which is even further cut back from the westerly end and the easterly end. This particular slide also includes the proposed solar panels that were proposed as part of the revised design presented to the Designer View Board on April 9th. The elimination of the third story ends is also in response to the board's comments. This slide indicates the landscaping plan, as well as the five-foot landscaping strip along the perimeter interior property lines. The project does comply with the code requirements for the spacing of trees to screen the project from the adjacent uses. This landscaping strip was also increased from four feet to five feet as part of the last final review. Here you have, again, a photograph of the streetscape facing Foothill Boulevard, as well just as a line drawing, and that would not obviously include the proposed landscaping nor the colors. The Designer View Board acknowledged multiple design improvements from the first final Designer View Board's submittal. That would include realigning and offsetting the front entry feature, which was previously proposed as a very symmetrical entryway, incorporating additional roof lines and variations along the top of the building, a ground floor arcade that mimics the sloped topography of Foothill Boulevard, and various other fenestration improvements and elements. However, the board commented that while the project was definitely going in the right direction in terms of a mission-style building, there could be further refinements as to the design of the building itself. This particular slide shows the rear elevation as presented by the applicant, showing the landscaping that would essentially screen the building. And the photograph on the bottom shows just a line drawing as to what the facade would look like without any landscaping. Now, again, as commented, on the front elevation, you'll notice that the structure was designed to be lowered on the ends as to try to better address the massing and the scale, comments that were made by the Designer View Board. However, based on the Design Review Board's discussion, there was essentially a consensus remark that the project essentially appears three-story from the rear, and given the setback has this imposition on the single-family dwellings to the south. Here you have a cross-section of the building. This would essentially be going through the interior of the building from the west elevation to the east elevation, depicting the two levels of subterranean garage, the three-level spaces of the building here, and then the two levels on the ends. You'll notice how the Foothill Boulevard elevation slopes from west to east approximately 10 feet. This particular cross-section depicts the building from the north to the south, meaning from Foothill Boulevard on the right-hand side to the single-family homes on the left-hand side. The sightline drawing was provided by the applicant. It depicts both a 45-degree angle and a 60-degree angle. Here are perspective drawings, again, presented by the applicant, just showing what the proposed project would look like from Foothill Boulevard, a close-up facing the parking entrance, as well as more of a bird's-eye view perspective of the project proposal. The Designer View Board was really cognizant of the fact that this project would be the first of its kind of its size and scale within that generally low-profile neighborhood surrounding the property. The Designer View Board particularly focused on how it would or would not fit within that context and how it would set the tone for future development. Following much discussion, the board ultimately decided to deny the project with a 5-0 vote. Again, at that point in time, the Designer View Board was given only two options. One would be to either approve the project with or without conditions or to deny the project. The Designer View Board chose to deny the project 5 to 0. As part of their record of decision, quote, "While the project has been modified and improved from the previous design, the two- and three-story development maintains a relatively homogeneous appearance along its 260 linear foot length. The project steps down somewhat along Foothill Boulevard, but appears largely as a three-story building at the south with little transition to the residential zone. Overall, the design is not appropriate for its site and context. Therefore, as currently designed, the project is incompatible with the surrounding context," end quote. The project, following its denial, was appealed by Ms. Martha Patterson on behalf of GBS III Investments. A copy of that appeal and a detailed staff analysis was included as part of the staff report. The underlying theme of the appeal was that the DRB essentially exceeded its authority in its decision-making for a project that ultimately meets code. The zoning code, however, clearly mandates that the board review projects for compatibility with surrounding properties, but it is well indeed within the Designer View Board's purview to evaluate and to even condition mass and scale. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council sustain the Designer View Board's denial of the project. That concludes staff's presentation. I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Weaver?
Curiosity only. Where's the investment company located?
It actually is listed at a PO box.
A PO box?
Correct. And this would be on the application. I'll obtain that information for you.
Indicate how many people are living in the PO box.
Running the company in the PO box? The only other thing, I'm curious about, what the heck are those two angles, 45 and whatever? Sightlines?
Sightlines, correct.
Well, they're totally meaningless.
It's essentially provided to indicate what individuals, at that point in time, as proposed in the drawing, what they would essentially see if they were at five feet looking up.
Well, the mountains are a lot lower than that angle, so.
Again, this was a sightline drawing that was submitted by the applicant, so.
I'll wait for it. Okay. So we will, I've got, I think I counted 25 speaker cards, not counting the applicant. All right. We're going to start with the appellant. And there are four names, Khan, Willis, Saroyan, Kashvari. And you're requesting 15 minutes, I assume?
Yep.
For the whole development team?
Correct.
Your name for the record, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are based here in the city of Glendale. We started working on this project in November of 2007. Times were very different then. The economy was moving forward. We had a business that was on the site that was still operating. Unfortunately, it no longer is. It's now closed. And the property owner, Farshid Kuzravi, thought it would be a good time to redevelop his property. Farshid hired design professionals that have done a tremendous amount of work here in the city of Glendale, had meetings with city staff to go over what the zoning development standards were, what the guidelines were that were in effect, and gave us very clear direction to design a project that meets the zoning development standards. No variances, no exceptions, no deviations from code. The height, the stories, the parking, the setback landscaping, all of it was to meet the code. The uses that we're proposing, the retail, the medical office, and the general office also meets the permitted uses in the zone. And then finally, both the zone and the building meets the general plan, the adopted general plan, by the city of Glendale. We based our project on codes, ordinances, and guidelines that are in effect now in our city. One of the first things I did was I went out to the site to walk the site. And as you are onsite, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to either drive by or go there over the years. It's a piecemeal of buildings that were built in the 40s and 50s with a number of ancillary structures scattered throughout with building materials as well placed all over the site. So the first thing is, is you're not looking at reusing this building for any other purposes. You're looking at raising this building and building something new. The other thing, or second thing I did when we were out there was, you start looking at the context of the neighborhood. You look and see what is around you, what types of buildings, what types of uses are around you. I have to tell you, in terms of this area, this is a very nondescript area. This has no real exciting architecture around us, and most of these buildings were either industrial buildings from many, many years ago that are in need of redevelopment. For example, directly across the street from our site is a Midas auto repair facility and a fast food restaurant, or Burger King. To the west of us on Foothill Boulevard is a concrete block box that's used for maintenance services. To the east of us is auto upholstery and auto repair. I would say that we were looking to upgrade from what's existing out there right now. We were not looking to duplicate or replicate in any way. I remember also thinking to myself that if I lived in this area and had the opportunity to eliminate this piecemeal buildings and this use that may not be the most desirable to live next to, and to get something new and clean in terms of a building and also uses that were a little bit more compatible, such as general office, medical office, or retail, that I would welcome or the people would welcome this project. Boy, was I wrong. Our initial submittal was a conceptual three-story building design, and Varus Saroyan, the architect, will put that up. This was our original conceptual. This was our original conceptual submittal, as you can see. We had our public hearing. There was quite a bit of public participation at that meeting. We've got a number of different comments. We got a number of mixed comments from the designer review board, the architectural style being one way. Some of the board members felt a contemporary, modern style would be appropriate. Others did not. Members from the community felt that a more mission or traditional style would be appropriate. Some board members thought three-story would be okay. Some thought a portion of a three-story would be okay, or a two-story would be okay. Members from the community thought differently. It ran the gamut as to the direction and the confusion that went on. When we left that meeting, I could tell you, we had no clear cut, no idea what we should come back with, from the architectural style to the building itself. From that point, we started meeting with different people, businesses in the area, community activists. We started meeting with realtors because we wanted to make sure what we were designing could be built and leased. It makes absolutely no sense to us to get a project that's approved that can't get financing and that can't be built. That makes no sense and is illogical to us, and we wanted to avoid that. We ended up with so many different ideas and different input from one end of the spectrum to the other. We had people that said, "Leave the building as is. We don't care if it's vacant. We don't care if it just sits there. That's fine with us." To people that wanted minor modifications done to the building and they felt comfortable with, and everywhere in between. We ended up with two different, completely different architectural styles with 12 different alternatives. And the alternatives weren't minor color tweaks. They were substantial changes, just putting it out there and saying, "Where do we go with this? Give us some direction." Let me state the obvious here. There is no one voice that speaks for this area. There isn't. You meet with one group, they say one thing. You meet with another group, they say something else. You meet with specific individuals, they have ideas and thoughts that are very different from these individuals. It's a moving target, constantly changing. And what we were trying to do was say, "We can make the changes and address some of the concerns, but what we can't do is, we can't design a project that doesn't make economic sense to build." The changes that have taken place over the course of time, if Varus, if you can show the revised or the most updated, we have many, many versions, but there's shortness of time. This is what we started off with. This is what we're at today. Obviously, the architectural style changes, the building height's changing, the massing changes. We reduced 6,000 square feet of building area. Once again, this is all within the confines of the code. We never exceeded the code in terms of the development standards. So we just keep shrinking and changing and modifying. We addressed as many of the concerns as we can, from the community, from the design review board, and from anybody else that gave us input, up to the point where it made no financial sense for us to build a project. I'll conclude my comments just on this. Just as a last note, there was extensive environmental analysis done. We started off the project, and a lot of people said, "This is a high-traffic-volume area. Have you guys done a traffic study?" Yes. We did a traffic study. We worked with the city's traffic and transportation division. It was reviewed. It was approved. We also looked at 13 different alternatives, or not alternatives, excuse me, 13 different issues as it relates to CEQA. That was reviewed. Staff concluded, not us, staff concluded, that this was a negative declaration. We have no mitigation measures that are required in terms of the environmental impacts on this project. I will conclude my portion of the presentation to turn it over to our property owner. If you have questions with me, I can answer them now, or, in the interest of time, I can come back and answer them. It's up to you.
Okay, we'll move on. The public comment period, the time to turn in your cards is over, by the way. Go ahead, sir, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Farshid Kozravi. I am the managing member of GBS3 Investments, the entity that owns the building. I live in Glendale. I've been a resident of the city of Glendale for over 15 years. My children go to the public school in the city of Glendale. And the mailing address, the P.O. box, is in the city of Glendale. About four years ago, when my brothers and myself looked into the opportunity of purchasing the property at the Foothill Boulevard, we looked at a lot of different aspects of that property, including in that was looking at the potential use of the building at that point, looking at the different zoning codes or guidance so that we understand what the potential use of that property is. We bought the property or the business with the intention of operating the business, and we did so for a period of about three and a half years. As we all know, the economic situation changed. We had to shut down the business at that point. This is back in October of 2008. While the business was not doing well throughout the last year or so of the operation, I met with a lot of different individuals, both at the community level, as well as business owners, as well as different people within the city, to have a better understanding of what the potential use is at that point. And again, with the clear understanding that I had as far as what are the possible uses for that site, I hired a local team to help me with the development of the site. As Rodney suggested, one of my, perhaps one of my only strict instructions that I had for the team was, "I want this to be 100% within the code. I don't want to have any variance, and I don't want to come back and ask for any particular forgiveness on a particular code." I know that there has been quite a bit of public hearings, comments, articles in the papers, and many different perceptions that have been created as far as what the developer, quote-unquote, is trying to do. This particular developer is a local resident that is just trying to develop something that we thought is needed in that community, being an office use and a medical use, for the local residents that can benefit from that. Certainly, you know, as far as the arguments that have been brought up, as far as context and so forth, I leave that to everyone else that has better qualification to have a dialogue around that. But from my perspective, I look at the precedence that has been set. There are buildings in that corridor that have perhaps higher height, number of stories, and so forth. And I also look at, from the perspective of, anything new is probably not going to be fitting into that environment. So from my perspective, I need a bit of a guidance as far as what that really means as far as being in the context. As I said, no, I have a team in place, and I have the members here that can perhaps give us a better understanding of what that means. Last of which, that I'd like to make a brief comment on, is the fact that it has already been brought up, that no matter what a person wants to do, it has to make economic sense. It has to be viable for anyone to be able to take on an additional risk, certainly at this time with the economic situation, to be able to invest in a project that certainly has a lot of risk associated with it. And also, it has to make economic sense from the lending entities, so that they also believe that this project is economically viable. This is not about Farshid or an individual saying that I want, pardon me, that I need to have, you know, this much square footage or so forth. It's really based on the economic formula that a lot of people use, including the bankers and the lenders. Thank you.
Jeff Willis, on behalf of Shepherd Mullen, speaking on behalf of the client here. Just after you do a couple legal housekeeping things first, it's important, though, to know that tonight, what you're hearing is a de novo hearing, and that's really important. What that means is basically clean slate. The mere 398-page staff report, the testimony given tonight, and the applicant's presentation are what you're going to decide on. Whatever the design review board did before is irrelevant, doesn't matter under your own charter. You're starting from scratch. You're deciding, is this the project we want? So that's the legal framework for while we're moving forward tonight. Second legal element that's very important to note is, and we've heard it a couple times, but let's kind of walk through what it means, and that is legal compliance with the code. There are three different elements of law governing development within Glendale. You have your general plan, which is the equivalent of the Constitution. The general plan has a land use element that says, in the land use context, here's what we're looking for in different areas. To help you implement that, you have the code. You have the statutes. That's zoning. And zoning here, we are, again, consistent with the zoning. And finally, you have the design guidelines, which are kind of how do we implement this kind of ethereal philosophical stuff. And again, this project is completely consistent with the general plan, the land use element of that general plan, with the zoning ordinance, as well as the design guidelines. It is not out of compliance with any of that. In fact, the very first more intense project that came up was consistent with all of those things as well. That's very important here, because what that means is that you have the discretion to approve this regardless of what the design review board did. What is a zoning code supposed to do? A zoning code takes you from where you are today to where you, the council, wants the city to go in the future. In your own land use element, and your zoning ordinance, and your design guidelines, you allow up to three-story buildings in that corridor that is surrounded throughout by residential on both sides. So this property is not unique in the sense that it's the only property in that zoning corridor that's going to have this problem. We're just the first guys here saying, "Hey, it's time to start redevelopment of a corridor that you intended to redevelop. Here's the first project to come along." Ironically, if our project gets denied, and later somebody else builds a two-story project, the next guy's probably going to get three because he's going to be consistent with the two. At some point, you're going to be facing this dilemma time after time because this is what your code asks people to do. You're asking people to look at this density and intensity. You're asking people to come forward with projects that are economically viable, that would proceed in this way, and this project applicant is completely consistent with what you've asked land use developers to do within your city. I will point out that the DRBs, that the client has gone to extraordinary lengths to take into consideration and modify the project to reflect the DRB's concerns, and I think the two views we've given tonight have been very illustrative of that. I would like to point out the difficulty they faced. On page nine of the staff report tonight, in the second bullet in the middle of the page, one of the directions was for greater architectural design and variety to break up the project's front elevation. Two paragraphs below, it says, "The board articulated the need for further architectural refinement so to have the elevations appear less massive, more cohesive, and better integrated." Within three paragraphs, you have directly contradictory directions being given to the client. This project is a good project. That's one thing that I think we can't say. This is a good project. This is going to be the kind of project you're going to be proud to have within your city, completely consistent with the code, and as you're, in effect, asking people to come forward with, based on your own zoning ordinances. If this is denied, and what my client's done is taken this to the edge of, "How can this be financed? How can my investment-backed expectations be met?" Any less intense than this, and it can't be done. Right now, this project couldn't be done any less intensely than this. If this is denied, this will defeat my client's reasonable investment-backed expectations and frankly, render the property useless for any economically viable use. Please take a look at the project, see this is a good project. This is going to be good for the city, and I'd encourage you to vote yes and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to the speaker cards, and once again, I encourage you to use less than your allotted time and try to help us to get through this in a reasonable amount of time. Randy Stevenson, followed by Rick Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members and staff. My name is Randy Stevenson, commercial real estate broker. My offices are located at 1111 North Brand Boulevard. What you have before you tonight is a code-compliant project. To deny the project is to say that code means nothing. What is permissible, quote-unquote, or desired, may not actually be permissible or desired. What individual, in good conscience and with any surety, will invest in a community when the rules are always changing? I support the city's efforts in initiating the community development standards in various parts of the city. But if you want to set a precedent that the code doesn't matter, and that those subsequent community development standards don't matter, you'll deny the project. The project is code-compliant. I support the approval of the project, and I hope you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Barnes, followed by Susan Bolin.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, staff. Rick Barnes, I'm a general investment broker for, in the city of Glendale. Sold over 3,000 properties in the time that I've been here. I own an investment property, a commercial building, very close to this or within reasonably walking distance. I attended several of the meetings, looking at what the staff was saying, and when I look at this building, one of the things that DRB was saying was, "We want more ups and downs." And the problem is, is that staff apparently doesn't know about ADA, because this building is almost impossible the way that it drops off, so they had to set where you have one floor for the elevator so that people can walk with wheelchairs, access, so on. And there's some difficulties with what DRB was saying and what you can do to meet federal guidelines also. So I actually, when I looked at this, no, I didn't like the other project. This is very, very good. The other part is, is that when I look at a destination and what's going on for the future in Locust Center, if you want top-quality doctors, you want top medical, you want lawyers in the community, this is a start. You don't have now another building in Locust Center on Foothill Boulevard that will attract top-ranking doctors and medical staff. This is a destination that will be there. The other part is, yes, when you go below and you look up, the problem is, I did go back on the street below and look up, the way it sets back, you're not going to see, even now, you don't see the mountains. So when you go up a little higher, you still get blue sky. When you go above the building and go, a street above, and look back down, you still have a mountain view. So you're not taking away views. What you are doing is you're improving the value of the neighborhood. And it's kind of like, when I look at it, is we're either going to plan for the future, and this is a plan, because it is going to change. And the other way is, we're going to be forced to make plans, and you're going to see a lot of different, what we have already up there, those old existing buildings that were just put in because you could do it. If we're going to plan for the future, this is a really good start, and you can actually maybe downgrade it a little bit, increase it, but density is going to increase up there whether we like it or not because of population changes. So I'm hoping that you will say yes to this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Susan Bolin, followed by Susan Coth.
Hello, good evening.
Hello, good evening. I've been a resident of the Foothills for 48 years, and for the last 13, I've lived south of this project-proposed area, about three blocks down. One of the draws of why my parents and both I stay in the area is the gorgeous mountain views. From my front yard, I can see the absolutely gorgeous San Gabriel's, and behind me, in my backyard, I can have the sweeping views of the Verdugos. This is critically important to me. It's important to my family. When I go to the grocery store, I can see the mountains. When I go to the hardware store, I can see the mountains. To me, that's top on the list. I actually do like the design, the latest design. However, if we could just shorten it by at least half, I would be happy with this project. But I can't approve the height, the three-story height of this project, and I encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Cothe, followed by Cesar Vallejo.
My name is Susan Cothee. I live directly behind the property in question. My husband's family originally owned that building back in the 70s, and we are very opposed to this massive structure because we are, as I say, directly above it. I think that the design review board was correct in saying that it should only be a two-story. We would be happy with a two-story building, but this large, it's going to be just out of place for the area. If you look at the new building that they just built in Montrose at Broadview and Verdugo, that building is massive, it doesn't even fit in, it's too modern for the area. There's a lot of challenges in building this building. As I said, because my husband, they did own this building, he knows of the massive construction problems they're going to have with large boulders that are buried where the driveway is at that. And we're concerned about all the dirt and all the mess, the traffic that's going to be caused by this construction. We just really don't want this big of a building. We want a building, yes.
Okay, thank you. Cesar Vallejo, followed by Mauro Dilchanian.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Cesar Vallejo, and I am resident in 3551 Fertile, just one block from the location which is going to be built, this new building. I join all my neighbors and community members opposing the construction of this story multi-use building on 3522 Foothill Boulevard, and I do it for several reasons. The distance between my home and the construction location is in actuality much smaller than what may appear since standing in our backyard provides a clear-cut view of the designated building site. Such is the case for most of our neighbors, and it follows the new somewhat large construction project will not only irrevocably alter our residential landscape, but also provide a blocked view of the mountains, as one of my neighbors mentioned before, that we currently enjoy. While this may seem somewhat irrelevant to outside or uninterested parties, as residents, we now and after will continue to pay proper taxes that take into account the benefits, views, and privacy that our location affords. The proposed structure will be one of the rare few three-story project within the span of several miles of Foothill Boulevard, a street otherwise characterized by single and two-story structures in the areas of Tejanga, La Crescenta, and La Cañada. Allowing this construction would serve as an invitation for increased development in an area that has otherwise maintained its architectural integrity to the delight of current residents. What I am here tonight to do is ask you, the council, to deny this project and examine what alternatives are available, including the construction of a small structure instead of a three-story building. This restriction, I believe, is not an unreasonable limitation of the potential of lumber and hardware to increase its business. What is perhaps unreasonable is the expectation that the residents of Marianne and Fertile, in the street where I live, are to adapt to a scenic change that is, in light of all the aforementioned points, unnecessary and, in addition, a disruption of the way of life we have all grown accustomed to as residents of La Crescenta. Our community, my family and I, tonight, thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mauro Dilchanian, followed by Nancy Camosh.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mauro Dilchan, and I live at 3557 Marianne Street, behind the proposed project. We do not want this project to be built for this reason. There will be excavation very close to our home, there will be excavation two levels down, just 10 feet from our bedrooms and dining room. We already have a high wall behind our house on the right side. This will create another wall to our left side. My husband and I have spent a lot of time and money to fix up our home, and who would ever want to buy this if another big building goes up? My husband and I asked you to vote against this appeal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This is the picture I want to show.
Okay, thank you. Nancy Camosh.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Camo, and I live within the 500-foot radius of the project. We have heard it argued over and over that the homeowners who reside next to or in the vicinity of this proposed project should have known, when they bought their homes, that they were buying next to a commercially zoned site, and so it is their own fault if they lose their privacy and views. Are we certain that they didn't look at Glendale's municipal code and urban design guidelines? If indeed they did, they would have noticed the term compatibility repeatedly used as an imperative to guide the development of commercial property, and therefore could feel assured that although they were buying next to commercial, they had every reason to believe that the city would be looking out for their interests as well as that of the commercial property owners. On the other side of this coin, the same argument applies to the applicant team. They should have known they were building in close proximity to R1 residential and would therefore be constrained by these compatibility requirements as well. There are, the applicant team has said that this project does comply with all codes, but there are a number of codes that it does not comply with. For example, in the introductory title 3001 of the municipal code, which consolidates all zoning regulations and provisions into one comprehensive zoning ordinance, the objective of this is to protect all areas, which include residential and commercial, from incompatible uses. An example of that, this ordinance unequivocally states on page 8J that, "In order to maintain a sound plan and compatibility with surrounding uses, the structural height of buildings must," not "could" or "might be," but "must," be regulated and directed to their most appropriate location." This is clearly not, in many ways, an appropriate location for this project. The code also indicates that scenic vistas and privacy are also factors to be taken into consideration, and these were largely ignored. And again, I want to say that under this introductory title to the municipal code 3001, there are more examples of codes which this project does not comply with, and there are guidelines in the urban design guidelines which this project does not comply with, and those are mentioned in the staff report that was issued online, the 300 and almost 400-page report. The planning department and design review board early on indicated they had severe reservations concerning the height and mass of this building, and advised the applicant team to redesign its project accordingly, which it did not do, and the project was ultimately denied. It is our hope that the city council will sustain the decision of the design review board and deny this project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Laura Ogallian, followed by Lisa.
Good evening, council members. My name is Laura Ogallian, and I reside at 3545 Marianne Street, just directly behind the Foothill hardware lumber. That my husband and I purchased it almost two years and plus because we were used to live in Glendale, and we wanted more peace and quiet, like suburb area. That's why we moved there two years ago. Like everybody else, we hope to have our privacy in our own home. However, that will be not possible if a three-story medical building, office, or construction is constructed. It's far too massive and would completely block sunlight and peace and our view of San Gabriel Mountain, which are visible from our second-story bedrooms for my daughters, which face buildings, face the buildings. People who will work at the building will look face straight to our backyard and bedrooms. We have to keep our curtains closed all the time and turn on the light when there is daylight outside. This project is too massive, especially on a steep slope. Please think long and hard before accepting such an enormous building to be built right behind single-family houses, and very, thank you very much.
Lisa Ogallian, followed by Kenneth Goldman.
Good evening, council members and staff. I'm Lisa Ogallian, and I'm 16 years old and a resident of 3545 Marianne Street. I'm here today because I am greatly concerned about this building also. As teenage girls, my sister, who is 13 years old, and I, would like to have privacy in our rooms. When we are in our rooms, we'd have to keep our only window closed. If a mixed office or medical building was constructed, those working or visiting the facility would stare right into our bedrooms and our study room, thus depriving us from our privilege of privacy. Please reconsider this plan. In a similar situation, you would not want your children to feel discomfort in their own house, especially in their own bedrooms. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Kenneth Goldman, followed by Barbara Paul.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth H. Goldman. I own my home in the Glendale Annex of La Crescenta, and I'm here urging you to uphold the findings of DRB II and deny the appeal. Development is not a four-letter word. However, unregulated development that ignores the community in which it is cited is its own form of blight. Compatible development enhances what is already desirable about an existing community. The scenic mountain views and small-town atmosphere that prevail in the Glendale Annex create a unique community. The south side of Foothill Boulevard currently consists mostly of single-story structures. Those larger ones currently in existence generally are set back from the street and conform to the downslope geography of the area. The incompatible mass of the proposed three-story structure at the sidewalk, which is comparable to a five-story structure looming over the R1 zone residences immediately below the subject property, would have both an immediate severely negative impact in its own right on the human scale of the neighborhood, and it would set a devastating precedent for unfettered development that would forever destroy that which attracts residents to our community. Herein lies the mission of both the design review board and now the city council. The applicant team has made abundantly clear its belief that their rights as owner of the Foothill lumber property trump the rights of the rest of the community. A community, however, comprises individuals of common interest, not merely common location. Common interest requires consensus, which in turn requires compromise. The public record of the February Design Review Board meeting shows that the board members unanimously imposed conditions on the development that sought to balance community concerns with the applicant's plans. Paramount among those compromised conditions was a two-story limit at the sidewalk. Not only did the subsequently submitted plan essentially ignore that condition, applicants cynically held the only meeting seeking community input of which I am aware, three days after submitting that final plan to DRB II, which unanimously rejected the plan at its 9 April meeting. The applicant team has made much about the project's adherence to current code and zoning requirements as if that were sufficient to grant them license to do as they please. They appear peeved that there is a third level of review that the city of Glendale has had the foresight to impose on new development, a design review that assesses a proposal's compatibility with the existing neighborhood. It is not enough that a building be well-constructed and fit its lot, it must also fit within its community. Mountain views are part of this community. I personally have nothing to gain, whatever your decision. I and my neighbors do have something to lose that once lost is forever gone. Applicant's plan is neither compatible nor harmonious with the existing Foothills community, and the appeal should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Paul, followed by Sandra Frazier.
Hi, my name is Barbara Paul, and I live just outside of the 500-foot radius of the proposed project. I oppose the design of this project due to its height and its mass. Foothill Boulevard does need to be developed, absolutely, but this is not a good start. Yes, the building is three stories from the front. It is not, it does not appear three stories from the back because of the downward slope. Any of the residents who live not only just behind, within one or two streets behind the building, but any of us who live south of that building will see the height of its mass far greater than three stories. I appreciate the fact that a lot of money and time went into the design and the redesign that these gentlemen did, but unfortunately, they continued to disregard the concerns and the requests of not only the community, but the design review board. The design review board, in their final decision, made the comment that they went as far as to say that the developer has squandered, squandered was the word that they used, squandered their opportunity for approval by refusing to lower the building to two stories, which was a condition, not a request. It was a condition for approval, it was not a request. Now, the developer, the attorneys, et cetera, are here, and the implication is that they are victims of a moving target, the moving target of the community, the moving target of the DRB. But they are not victims of a moving target, they are victims of their own unwillingness to listen to and to work with the community and the DRB. I ask you to please support the decision of the DRB as well as the staff report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandra Frazier, followed by Bob Church.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, and council members and assistants and staff. I am here because I am very concerned with the traffic.
Name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sandra Frazier. I'm nervous because I've never been in front of so many people. I live on Dunstmore, below Foothill, between community and Foothill. I live on Dunsmore, below Foothill, between community and Foothill, and I'm concerned for the extra traffic that'll be coming because of this building. There's a school on Altura, Lincoln Elementary School, and also there is a school on Foothill on Dunsmore. I can't remember the name of the school, and I'm so nervous. Well, there's always accidents on Foothill and Dunsmore. Yesterday, I brought you a little souvenir yesterday morning in front of Jay's Maintenance, three-car pileup.
That's mine, by the way.
Okay, I've lived on Dunsmore since '76, and in my house, in front of my house, cars are flying back and forth all the time. They've totaled out my car, and across the street, two cars. And then I work on Foothill Boulevard between New York and Dunsmore. At the Trader Joe's Shopping Center, I'm a hairstylist there, and my coworker, two of her cars parked in front of Foothill have been totaled. A worker at Trader Joe's in front of Pizza Hut had their car rear-ended. And so I am worried because I can't even cross the street going to my house when I want to go to lunch because cars are left and right and are practically hitting you. And the traffic going up and down Foothill Boulevard is very bad. And as I was coming home, I noticed, I counted the car spaces where this project's going to be, where they're going to be making left-hand turns. It's right in front of the Burger King, and there's also a street next to it. So people will be coming left, some people will be going right, and it's going to be a mess. It's going to be dangerous. In the years I've been there, there's been a lot of accidents on that corner. So that's my, why I don't want this project.
Thank you. You'll have to take your auto parts.
I'm shaking, I'm so sorry.
You'll have to take your auto parts with you.
Want your souvenir back? Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you. Bob Church, followed by Ellen Codwalder.
Mayor, council members, staff, I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I do want to correct one of the proponents of the project. I live directly behind the project on Fairchild. My property backs up to Mary Ann, and I can see the mountains from my property currently. And you are absolutely correct, Councilman Weaver, I will not. That 45-60-degree view will only show me sky in the future if this is approved. I'm disappointed after months of supporting the DRB meetings and their efforts, their hard work, the public meetings, the staff meetings, the city planning councils that have happened to try to plan a future for this area, that we are at this point to where they would appeal this project with, where the massive scale, it's a beautiful project. It would look awesome on brand, great on Central. But Foothill is in the process of change, and it's embracing growth. The new library, the Walgreens, the recent projects that have been built, I believe, are in the best interests of developing Foothill, and it's a continuing process. The sports chalet, everything that's been done, I believe, is working towards embracing the future of the area. This will dictate the skyline of the area. This project, the mass and scale, will let a developer tell the DRB that they, sorry, you're not, your opinion isn't good enough. I'm going to the city council because this is what I want the skyline to look like in Glendale. I am hoping, and I'm asking you, to deny this project, to allow the city to grow where a jewel city, the DRB is one of the supporting prongs that holds that jewel, and to overturn their decision is to weaken their approach. You're going to get a floodgate of people that are just going to say, "DRB said no, I'm going to city council." I hope that doesn't happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ellen Codwalder, followed by Sherry Stubbs.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ellen Codwalder. I live at 3616 Third Avenue, within the 500-foot radius of the building. I purchased my home and moved into this area in 2000 because of the quality of life here. The semi-rural, small-town, suburban atmosphere separated from the major downtown area, which still has beautiful mountain and valley views and scenery, and a wonderful, very special sense of community. All this is what attracted me to the area, both for myself and for raising a family. And I know that I'm not alone in this, and that these are the reasons most people either have moved here or have continued to stay in this area. As a resident, I always have been and am committed to supporting and working to enhance the qualities that make this area what it is. This proposed building will not enhance these qualities. It will in fact begin to destroy the very elements that contribute to the area's quality of life and to change the entire character of the area. Statements continue to be made that the building is completely within the code, but I don't know how that can be said when, again, as it has been said, it is so clearly stated over and over in the code that compatibility requirements must be met. First, one of the goals of the Urban Design Guidelines is to encourage improvements that respect or improve neighborhoods. Once again, this building does neither of those. It has neither respected the neighbors, as it was stated, it is known that the only meeting that was actually held with the immediate neighbors was three days after the plans had already been submitted to the city. So they never included the neighbors, you know, they never worked together with the neighbors before they actually, you know, sent it to the city. Also, have never, nor will improve, it will rather begin to destroy, again, as I said, the elements that give the neighborhood its quality of life. We are not against development. We want to see development, but want it to be the kind that will add to and enhance the area and the quality of the life of the area. This mansion-esque monstrosity belongs in an urban setting, not in a Foothill community. There are petitions with over 400 signatures of people stating they would like to see only one-story buildings along the south side of Foothill. There have been many letters, articles, many community meetings and conversations, all stating that this three-story building is not what is wanted in this area. It is too large for the area. It is not compatible with the community, and I hope that the DRB's decision to deny this project will be upheld.
Thank you. Sherry Stubbs, followed by Sharon Rogavichary.
My name is Sherry Stubbs. I live at 3200 Farresta Street, Unit 11, La Crescenta in the Glendale Annex. I want to express support for the city staff's summary and recommendation to deny the project, and I sincerely hope you will follow the recommendation as well as the determination of the experienced and knowledgeable design review board. For the record, there are a few issues I would like to briefly mention without going into too much detail. On the size issue, on the statement of error, there's a statement that the design guidelines go to great length to describe bulk and masses, look and feel, not a size. They're interchangeable. Common dictionary will tell you that. As an interested and affected party, and as an individual homeowner, I retain the law firm of Chatten Brown &amp; Carstens, which specializes in land use matters. I believe you have their July 6, 2009 correspondence in the agenda packet. Hopefully, you received a supplemental correspondence this afternoon in response to the appellant's statement of error. If you did not, I would like to provide you with that. Did you get the? I have it, okay. And in that supplemental correspondence, I believe it addresses financial pro forma issues, which were brought up by the gentleman from Shepherd Mullen. Addressing the city's response to my attorney's July 6, 2009 correspondence, I would like to address a couple of points for the record. As to traffic, not in anyone's imagination can a study over 30-years-old be considered current at the time, nor can a study from as far away as Florida and New York be applicable to the Foothill community of the Glendale Annex. Standardized or boilerplate studies won't work for that area. The response further states that the study has been revised. Using that language indicates a recent revision. If that is the case, then it would seem that further comment is allowed and appropriate. The negative declaration has not yet been adopted. I believe the issue of a negative declaration or an environmental impact report for that matter are proper issues for judicial determination if the matter goes that far. The applicant in this matter has been Rodney Kahn throughout the entire process, yet the appellant is a Martha Jo Patterson for GBS III Investments, the owner. Why is not the applicant the appellant? It is the applicant's plans and submittals that are subject to appeal. There may be a question of standing here to bring the appeal in the first place. Mr. Kahn's published statement in Monday's news press that to uphold the DRB's decision would send a message to other people looking to invest in our community is without merit. The overriding factor here is obedience of governing rules and laws. There is a point at which one must look past the value of the dollar. At issue is the quality of life of an entire community, and that quality of life is more important than one property owner's financial interests. This case is precedential. We are not talking about one building. In actuality, we are talking about the distinct possibility of many more buildings should the DRB decision be overturned. The decision of the design review board should be upheld and the project denied. Should you decide to reverse the design review board, however, the project should still be denied on the basis that a negative declaration was the wrong vehicle. Still yet, a further basis for denial rests with a flawed and defective negative declaration. Again, I urge you to deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Rogavichary, followed by Sharon Wiseman.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members and staff. My name is Sharon Rogavichary, and as you are probably aware, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors this spring unanimously passed the Community Standards District for the unincorporated segment of Foothill Boulevard. I was co-chair of the Foothill Design Committee of the Crescenta Valley Town Council, which over the course of six years drafted this document. During that time, we had three large general community meetings and numerous smaller meetings with the property and business owners along the Boulevard and the Crescenta Valley Chamber of Commerce. With their input, we then came up with the standards and guidelines that will lead to a more attractive and vibrant business environment. When the CSD came before the Planning Commission of LA County and the Board of Supervisors, no one attended in opposition. So consensus of the unincorporated area was exactly what we were going for, and that's what we got. So we are glad to see that the City of Glendale is working on updating the general plan with specifics for Foothill Boulevard. We look forward to seeing the final result, which will hopefully bring cohesiveness and compatibility to the major business corridor of the Crescenta Valley. All along, the Foothill Design Committee's mantra has been, "Good design is good business." Unfortunately, this project is not a good design. If this site were just one half-mile to the east, across Pennsylvania Avenue, which, by the way, does not have a Berlin Wall running down the center of it, the Valley considers themselves one valley, unincorporated or Glendale, if it were a half-mile to the east, it would be rejected for not complying with the CSD. This project does not meet six major points when compared with the standards for a C3-zoned property in our West Town area, where we have the majority of properties with a zoning and depth comparable to this project. The building height, 35 feet is the maximum allowed height in a C3 zone, including the roof forms. This project is 41 feet at its highest point. The front setback for a C3 in the West Town is 20 feet. This project has no front setback. Landscape and hardscape, 15% minimum is required with 5% softscape in ground. We feel very strongly that landscaping contributes to the design and the attractiveness of the building. This building has 9.76% total, most of it in the back. In fact, I would venture to say, except for a few pots, all of it in the back. Driveways, not more than 20 feet of the commercial frontage shall be devoted to parking access. The reason that we've done that on the unincorporated side is to limit exactly what one of the residents was talking about, the amount of driveways contributes to the amount of accidents. This project has two 24-foot-wide driveways. Roof design, buildings shall incorporate actual roofs and roof forms on at least three sides of the structures that are consistent with the declared style of the proposed building. This project has large sections of flat roofs with parapids. The retaining walls, we were very aware of the C3, well, actually, all of our commercial zone is butted up against residential, single-family residential. We really worked hard to get a mix that you could have a building that wouldn't absolutely overwhelm the downslope neighbor. To that point, we did a retaining wall. We said that the retaining walls that were greater in eight feet in height shall be constructed in four-foot-high increments, above the first eight feet, step-back two feet, planted and irrigated, to give something to look at from those downslope neighbors. As you know, this project has a masonry retaining wall of 13 and 1/2 feet at the rear property line with no step backs. Mr. Kahn says that there's not one voice through the valley. He's right, but there's not one voice here that lives in the Crescenta Valley that's here to support this project. So we ask that you reject the project and deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Wiseman, followed by Bill Wiseman.
Thank you, mayor and councilmen. My name is Sharon Wiseman from far north Glendale. In previous hearings before the DRB, the owners of the property at 3522 Foothill Boulevard have claimed that it is not economically feasible to build a structure smaller than the nearly 50-foot-three-story building currently proposed. They mentioned it again this evening. This does not seem reasonable because the two most recent projects in the eight-block Glendale stretch of Foothill, both on the north side, are single-story and appear to be doing as well as can be expected in this economy. The mini-mall at 3747 Foothill replaced a nondescript McDonald's with several establishments. Uartu, a restaurant and banquet hall in a remodeled Shakey's Pizza Parlor at 3463 Foothill, kept the same building footprint. Neither project nor the DRB-approved enhancements to add a car wash to the 76 gas station on the southwest corner of Foothill in New York met with widespread opposition from the neighboring residents or other businesspeople. In short, they were compatible with their surroundings, worked with the community, and were approved. Two projects are now operating. Many other businesses, such as the successful veterinary clinics, are single-story. If other businesses are viable with a reasonable size, it indicates a well-designed project that fits into the neighborhood in terms of mass and scale could be similarly successful in the right hands. The neighborhood shouldn't suffer because of poor timing in the purchase of property or lack of entrepreneurial skills or business judgment. It is not the DRB's nor the council's responsibility to make sure someone's investment pencils out. Even when a building represents, a building presents, one or especially a two-story streetscape on Foothill and is quite unobtrusive, it can loom above the homes below it. If you look on the back page, the step-back acupuncturist building is not nearly as high as a proposed building as evidenced by the relationship to the power pole, yet it still looms above the homes behind and below it on Mary Ann Street. The low-profile businesses on the south side of Foothill to the east of Lauderdale don't seem very tall, unless you look at them from a bit down Lauderdale and see how the modest building in the middle juts up above its neighbors. In addition to being too large, incompatible with the surroundings, and not designed with the topography in mind, the proposed use of this building is poorly thought out. While the retail component is welcome, the office and especially the medical offices would add to an apparent existing glut. There are banners advertising medical office space for lease in existing buildings much closer to Verdugo Hills Hospital. The huge, almost-complete, modern building at the corner of Broadview and Verdugo, again, much closer to Verdugo Hills Hospital, is for medical offices. There's another medical office building planned for Verdugo Boulevard across the street from the hospital, next to yet another building. Please consider the neighborhood and concur with the DRB in denying this inappropriate project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Bill Wiseman, followed by Mike Mohill.
I have a photograph I'd like to put up. You can do that if not. Not right now, but yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman from far north Glendale, and I want to make a few brief comments on three different subjects tonight. Water and sewer usage, trash- three different subjects tonight: water and sewer usage, traffic accident issues, and compatibility. I don't think I need to spend any time tonight reviewing the current water situation in Glendale. You are all very well aware, I think, of the challenges that we face in this regard. My concern regarding the water and sewer usage estimates for this proposed project is that they represent a significant increase over and above the current usage levels. At a little over 6,000 square feet of retail space, the current Foothill lumber building uses less than 500 gallons of water a day. That's calculated at a rate of 80 gallons per day per 1,000 square feet, which is the number for retail. It turns out that medical and general office uses are much thirstier than retail. The rate for medical and general office use is 250 gallons per day per 1,000 square feet. Since the proposed project is approximately 80 percent medical and general office space and 20 percent retail, most of the building is going to be using water at that higher rate. I've passed out a spreadsheet showing the estimated water and sewer usage for the existing building. I included the existing building, the three proposed interim designs, and the final design. You may note that the net daily increase in water usage over the current building of the final project design is 7,758 gallons per day. That's the net daily increase. Assuming this building is open for business 250 days of the year, the net annual increase is almost 2 million gallons of water, and that estimate does not include the additional potable water that will be required for landscape irrigation. In regards to traffic, in the five-year period between 2004 and 2008, there have been 118 traffic accidents in the stretch of Foothill Boulevard between Pennsylvania and Lowell, according to Glendale's Traffic Collision History Report. Those 118 collisions resulted in 61 injuries. 20 percent of those collisions were caused by vehicles traveling eastbound on Foothill at an unsafe rate of speed. Since Foothill slopes downhill from west to east in the area adjacent to the proposed project, those vehicles that are speeding downhill are going to be on the same side of the street as the driveways for this project, and any significant increase in traffic from that location will have the likely result of an increase in the already-too-high accident rate on Foothill Boulevard. Finally, I would like to draw your attention to a photograph, if I can get it up here on the screen, and get out my laser pointer here. This is far north Glendale, taken from Duke Magian Park. These red lines over here represent, that's the eastern border of the City of Glendale at Pennsylvania. This is the western border of Glendale at Lowell. You can see the 210 freeway here at the base of the Verdugo Mountains. Other than that, besides the streets and the rooftops of the houses, you don't really see too much. Foothill Boulevard is right here, and so this is the area close to Pennsylvania and Foothill where the shopping center is. But if you look along Foothill, you don't really notice any buildings sticking up here. What you primarily notice sticking up are the trees, and that's the way we'd like to keep it in our valley. In closing, I'd like to thank the DRB for their hard work, the amount of time they spent analyzing this project. They had a very tough decision. Ultimately, I believe they made the right decision for our community. I urge you to support their denial of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry. Billy, if you could just keep a copy of that picture for the file, please.
I have a hard copy if you need.
Mike Mohill, followed by Michael Morgan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I like the presentation that Mr. Weisman presented there on the view there. Reminds me that he talked about there's no obstruction of the view of the people's homes. Do you remember Brand Boulevard about 1970 or Central Avenue, 1970, 1980, when there was no Glendale Galleria? When there was no high rises on Brand Boulevard or Central? And we stay with that idea of keeping Brand Boulevard looking like Hollywood Boulevard, honky-tonk. The properties in Glendale would be down, down, down. There would not be a Glendale Americana at Brand. The city would look different. We wouldn't have any taxes to pay for the, of course, salaries and pensions. We do need revenue, Mr. Weaver, don't we? And this is an excellent source of revenue, this commercial building. The city is always looking for places to find revenue. The Foothill area contributes very little as far as taxes for the City of Glendale, but the downtown area of Glendale contributes most of the taxes for the City of Glendale, unless my figures are wrong. Here is an excellent opportunity to develop an area that has been sleeping for many years. I was on Foothill Boulevard just the other night, went from the two freeway all the way up to Windy Grules, placed it by the library. It was nothing but small businesses, nothing special. It was like, you know, it's like, uh! Now you have an opportunity with this development to start something new. Think outside of the box. Now here's a gentleman who I don't know at all, but took the risk and played by the rules. He went to the city, he went to the Design Review Board, went to everybody and said, "Give me guidance." And he did. He went to the public, "Give me guidance." And what did they all give him? Nothing but 25 ideas. And he tried to do the best he can. Beautiful buildings, ADA compliance encourages high-end professional buildings. Isn't that nice to have? High-end buildings, not honky-tonk. High rises versus, you know, there are always going to be winners and losers when it comes to development. Unfortunately, that's the reality. The people who live around Brand Boulevard or Central, some of them are winners and some of them became losers. If the people don't like the zoning on Foothill Boulevard, then you should have gone to Mr. Hagani months ago and a year ago and say, "Hey, you know what? Why don't you change the zoning on the upside of Foothill Boulevard and say only two-story, and on the other side, make it five-story?" Give the man who owns the property the opportunity. You set the rules, now you don't change them. You can't keep changing rules. It costs the man a lot of money. And if you deny this to this man, I think you ought to pay him for his cost because you people set the rules and the regulations, and he only followed them. Thank you.
Michael Morgan, followed by Mike Lawler.
Hi, my name's Mike Morgan. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Starbird and staff, I don't know how you follow Mike Mohill and where he comes up with the logic when he comes. The first thing is, we don't want Brand Boulevard up on Foothill Boulevard. We want something that's compatible to the neighborhood. This is not compatible to the neighborhood. I could spend, I have all sorts of notes to do, but you're going to hear most of the stuff you've heard from everybody else. I'm just here to support sustaining the DRB's decision to deny the Design Review Board application. Foothill is a special place in Glendale. You've indicated with montros, old-town montros, it stayed the way it is, and people come there because of the way it is. We're not asking that there shouldn't be building up there. When you look at the county portion, the library, Walgreens, lots of buildings are going in, they're compatible to the neighborhood. This building just definitely is not. I just want to thank you, and I hope you deny this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Lawler, followed by David Myers. That's the last card, David Myers.
Hello, my name is Mike Lawler. I live in La Crescent. This project's been really frustrating to a community like ours that really values compatible development. It was equally frustrating, or perhaps even more frustrating, to the Design Review Board, who wanted the project to work but just couldn't get the applicant to comply with their conditions. At the preliminary DRB meeting last July, the board came out with 14 recommendations regarding the design, which at that time, the board stated they had serious reservations about. Well, my personal favorite of these recommendations was the last under community outreach, which stated, "Meet with the neighbors before returning to the board." Well, they didn't. And in fact, by the time of the next DRB meeting in February of this year, they had failed to address about half the recommendations from July. The DRB again went through the design at the February meeting and came back with eight conditions. These are no longer recommendations but conditions for approval. And I'll remind you that the "meet the neighbors" recommendation, a real fundamental for any project, still had not happened. Flash forward to the last DRB meeting in April. At this meeting, the applicant has done a little better. With this design, the applicant has only completely failed on two of the conditions set in February, and the board gave him half credit on a third. Unfortunately, the applicant had failed on the number-one condition, reduce the mass and scale of the building to fit the surrounding neighborhood. Despite the DRB's suggestions on how to achieve the three stories but still maintain a street projection of two stories, the applicant stuck to his original three-story design. Just couldn't be ignored by the DRB. That was a major condition that they required, and it wasn't met. It's pretty simple. They had to deny the project. And what about this meeting with the neighbors? That should have been a first step in this process. Well, the applicant did hold an open meeting with the neighbors of the project on March 19th. A good crowd showed up, and the meeting was held inside the former Foothill lumber. The meeting's purpose was to inform the neighbors of the status of the project and to solicit feedback and suggestions that we naturally thought would be taken into consideration for the final design. But first, we got to hear from the owner's lawyer. How would you feel going into a contentious meeting, and the first person you hear from is the opposition's lawyer? Well, actually, that happens to you guys all the time, but for a group of average Joes, it kind of sets the tone, you know? The lawyer, who was clearly there to intimidate the crowd, gave us a rundown on the philosophy of property rights, trumping the community's rights, and he finished by calling opposition to unrestrained development un-American. So during the rest of the meeting, lots of feedback and suggestions were given overwhelmingly negative to the current design. So how were the feedback and suggestions incorporated into the final design? Well, they weren't. We all found out a couple of days after the final design that the final design had been submitted to planning on March 16th, three days before the meeting. It was an insult to the neighbors and a waste of their time, and it further infuriated an already angry community. This applicant has failed. He failed to be a good neighbor in the community in which he wanted to build his out-of-scale project, and he's failed to meet the standards set by the city's own Design Review Board that board members appointed by you. The DRB set the conditions for approval, and he chose to ignore them. Please deny this ridiculous appeal.
Final card, David Myers.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members. My name is David Myers. This project is a prime example of why the DRB was created, and this project still has a long ways to go. Mr. Hagani, your revamping of the DRB has worked. Thank you. It has saved the applicant and the community a lot of time, but even with their preliminary first and second submittals, the project was still denied with a very, a hard line drawn in the ground. Glendale's building standards are not just about zoning code. Zoning code is the bottom level of building standards within Glendale. It's the starting point. We have higher expectations of projects in Glendale. We want the design. We want the construction to be quality. We want it to be compatible. We want to be proud of it. We want to look at a building as we drive by it every week, twice a day, and say, "I'm proud of that building," not, "Oh, my gosh, where did that come from? How did that get built? Was that building one of the ones that was similar to the one on Broadview and Verdugo? This is going to be actually bigger than that one." And everybody asks, "How did that one get through?" Well, that one got through on December 29th, 2005. Got under the radar. That probably is not going to happen again. I've heard lots of justification of this project, but yet I have not heard how it's going to work. They haven't sold it. They haven't presented it in a good way. They've just justified it. I wonder how many meetings with staff and/or the DRB ended up with, "No can do. We're going to do it our way. This is what we want." You heard it already tonight. It really doesn't matter what part of their team was the hardliner, but there's definitely somewhere that says, "It's my way or the highway" with this group. And that's, the flexibility as far as a project of this scale is gone because they can come back. Just because this has been denied doesn't mean this is the end of the road for these guys. They could go and redesign it, resubmit it, come back, but they choose not to. They're full threats, and the whole time, all they do is keep a battle cry of, "It's following code." But it doesn't follow the Design Review Board suggestions, recommendations, conditions, none of those. So in summary, this is a time to back up staff, back up the DRB, that you've spent a lot of time working out the details. This is a time to say, it's not easy to say no to a project. It isn't. But the DRB was correct when they denied it in the present form that it is. So I urge you to back up staff, back up the DRB, and move item 9B2. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I want to thank the public for their input. Now the appellant will be given the opportunity to rebut the speakers.
Hi, Jeffrey Willis again of Sheppermore, and on behalf of the appellant, the vast majority of what we heard tonight is in the nature of community testimony. The difficulty with community testimony is for every person here, there's another thousand in the community that has a different point of view. It gives you a good slice of life, but it's not really an indication of community will other than these are the people most interested in coming out and speaking. There are a few specific legal issues that I would like to address. The first of which is the sequoia concerns that were raised. Those have been addressed by the city. We have complete support for what the city's analysis of the environmental review has done to handle both traffic, which is on this project relatively minimal, as well as the utility and other impacts that have been discussed. We have no issue with any of the things the city found in recommending a negative declaration for this project. In addition, there were a number of issues regarding view shed. The difficulty with evaluating that is that there is no, we don't, there's no way to evaluate the value of that because no one brought in photos, nobody brought in any indication that shows what's happening. It's even difficult for us to evaluate. I've been to the site personally, and I had a very different viewpoint, excuse the pun, than the people that were testifying. So I just, what I'd say is that the project is designed to take slope into consideration. The project is designed to attempt to comply not only with the letter of the code, not to stay with the minimum, but to go beyond and be a good project, be a project that I think the vast majority of people living within the city will drive by every day and say, "I'm happy they did that project." And with that, I'd recommend approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd outclose the public hearing. Are there any comments?
I'm ready to make comments.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Weaver.
I state, this is one of the rare cases where nobody's lobbied me either way. It's so unusual. And, well, the only way I've read about Foothill lumber has been in the news press. I have received a number of emails, every single one of them saying, "Deny." That's the extent of it. And I'm not going to break down the project like an engineer or anything like that. I just want to make general comments based on my own perception. I jotted some things down, and I had some more red pencils. I listened to the speakers. So let me start by saying, I understand a landowner has a right to develop his or her property if the zoning code of the city is followed. But I feel for the project owners and his development team because their side does not see- seem to understand that within our zoning codes that the city have given authority to our designer review boards and staff to look at other factors such as neighborhood compatibility, including mass and scale when passing judgment on a project. That's what we put them there for. Today, tonight, you see four non-architects sitting here. None of us would put each other on the designer review board, but you're going to have to take what you get in this denover hearing from four non-architects, which is a little I was mentioned, and I had written some notes on it. Brand Boulevard is four lanes with a median and parking on each side. Foothill is four lanes with a smaller median and parking on both sides. Now, should you allow on Foothill what we have on Brand? No. And we have different areas. Adams Square is not Royal Canyon. Look at, look at Honolulu, Mayberry, totally different character. This city, because of our hills, stuff, every sector you go into, you have a different Born and raised here, 70 years. Foothill has a different character to it. Yeah, I regret the speeding area on Foothill. That's for another day. But Foothill is different. I don't think we can allow it to turn into a brand. I look, every day I'm up in Montrose to have my green tea. And every day I drive down Verdugo Road at Broadview, and I see that three-story structure, modernistic structure, and I wonder, "How the blank blank, did that ever get approved?" And the term I'll use that I haven't heard before, but I think it applies anywhere, in any community, "development creep." Once you allow one in like that down there, you're going to start to see other developers come in on Verdugo Road below Honolulu, saying, "Well, look at that over there, so I want to build one on this side." I think that is out of place, but that never came here. So I'd like to know what the designer review board did when they saw that one come through. So I believe, in my opinion, the project is not compatible with the neighborhood surrounding it. Virtually every building, from what I've observed in the years I've driven there, especially on the south side, they're one story. But the developer has chosen to stay with the design on the lot. That is two-story on the west side, and by the slope down of 10 feet, it's now three stories. I think the direction was given pretty clear, no three stories. Code compliant, but not compatible. All I had to do was look at that first picture when I opened my pack and says, "Not compatible", before I did anything else. It just doesn't fit for me on Foothill. Because that, three stories, that's not what I want to see on Foothill from the western border of the city to the eastern. That is not La Cressanta. That is not Foothill. Different area. Want to make the tax dollars we'll make on downtown on Brand Boulevard. Yes, and I remember Brand Boulevard back in the 40s and 50s, riding the streetcar and seeing that. But times change, cities change, but if we allow every portion of a city to develop at the same rate, in terms of heights and densities or whatever, nobody's going to like it. Nobody in the city's going to like it. I wonder, where's the character in the city? Where's the change in the city? Nowhere. I believe a two-story building might have made it through the designer review process, but if it is, it's going to be in the future. It will require a new submittal to the city and new design. I respect the positions of all the residents and others who have stated the positions on this project. From what I have heard tonight, reviewed in the files, this little old file here, and based on our own, my own observations, I cannot support the design. In summary, I will vote to deny this project, which may be very well-designed, yet it is a good design. Put it down on Mid-Brand, across from the Alex Theater, and people, "Hey, that's great. It's only three stories tall." But not on Foothill. So I will deny it, vote to deny it, because I do not think it is compatible with the area that it will be situated in. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some comments, but I'd like to ask Rodney Khan to come forward, answer a couple of questions for me. First of all, Rodney, I'd like to say that you've done excellent job hiding your horns and that pointy tail of yours.
Thank you very much.
But let me ask you this. Why won't a two-story building work in this situation? Why? What I'm hearing, because what I'm hearing is that there's certainly going to be greater support for a two-story version of this building than we currently have. What's the deal here? Is it the parking? I mean, because, because what I'm understanding is anyone that's going to redevelop on Foothill is going to have to include parking in their building to make it code compliant or seek a variance. Why won't two stories work there? Especially around the mission design where the spires, you might want to point me to DRB after I'm through with this. I mean, the spires of the mission right in the middle are typically the highest point. I mean, that's the mission style. It's supposed to be the prominent feature.
That's mission style.
And what you're having is the three stories of those other facades creeping above that. Why can't that come down to two and have those two spires be the highest point of that building? That's, yeah, go ahead.
That's the only one question.
Okay. I'll try to address your comment. There's, there's a few different reasons. First of all, it's economics, and that's something that in past hearings and meetings was outside of the purview of the reviewing body. For the staff, for the design review boards, they can't factor in the economics of the project. You guys can. It doesn't make economic sense to build a two-story building on this site and make it pencil out. That's what part of my presentation was originally, to say, "We can make a building either two-story, we can make it one-story, in fact, and get it approved. But if we can't get it financed, and we can't get it constructed, it's a meaningless approval." So we shrunk the building as much as we could, that's why we stepped in the third floor. When there was a suggestion that was listened to and researched, which is push the building down, keep this two-story facade along Foothill Boulevard, and have a third story buried in the subterranean on the back, that created two problems for us. One is, in doing that, that triggers a variance requirement for the overall height. And as we said, we didn't want to deviate from the code. The second thing is, is in terms of leasing out that space with no windows, with no openings, and oriented directly onto the residential area, I don't think too many commercial-type offices or businesses were going to lease that. It didn't make economic sense. If it made economic sense, we would have done it.
All right, thank you. Thank you. One of the problems I'm having, and I'm having big problems with Foothill Boulevard, not just this project. When we talk about compatibility, what is compatibility on Foothill Boulevard in this stretch? Is it the Office Depot, the three-story with the mirrored facade, which I think is 10 times worse than this? Is it the, the Crescenta Plaza, the Vons there with the, right at the corner, which is, appears to be a three-story where Los Gringos Rapidos, was that the name of the restaurant it used to be? I think they were not a business. Is that compatible? If we did a duplicate of that right there, would that work out? Is it something that we see on, on the La Cenata end, where they're town center? We're talking about Sharon, the 20-foot setback that you were referencing. Boy, they're right up to the, they're right up to the property line where Taylor's is and that sushi restaurant, and that whole road there, the Home Goods and all that, that's right up there. And what, what I'm hearing is that this is up to that property line as well. Let's leave the height out of it for now. And that's not compatible. Is it the Osh? Is it the Do-It Center? Is it the, is it the In-N-Out? Is it the series of little buildings? Is it the Crescenta-Cenata Pet Hospital? Is it the Sardo's Upholstery? What is compatible there? I'm really not, yeah, I'm stuck. I mean, I'm really stuck. If anything comes to me in the future or to DRB, I don't know how they determine what's compatible. You know, it's easy to talk about view blocking, and that's, you know, that's something that's objective. But when you're talking about compatibility, is it the Midas? If we took the Midas that's across the street and duplicated that and put it there, what would we be saying today? We wouldn't be saying, "It's not compatible," because there's something, it's a duplicate of what's there. Are we saying, "It's going to be too high? Oh, there might be height issues." The problem is, so much of Foothill Boulevard, and please excuse me, God, I love Foothill Boulevard, is decaying. A lot of those single-story buildings are just Foothill lumber. And look what's happening to the actual structure of Foothill lumber. It's just falling apart. It's ugly. Mr. Mohill said, I don't know, he made some sort of gesture describing it. But we need to think about what we really want to do. I don't want to necessarily see a continuation of those flat, boxy, up the street, Jay's Maintenance. That's a brick bunker. If we had a brick bunker there, what would we be saying right now? We'd be saying, "Well, it's compatible, so we want to go with it. It's low in height, it's not blocking any views." Is that something we would want to approve? So these are the problems that I'm having with Foothill Boulevard. There's so many different styles there. There's new stuff, there's old stuff, there's stuff with setbacks, some with no setbacks, some that's ultra-contemporary, some that's, you know, should be red-tagged because it's falling down. I know we're talking about the design standards, and I went through the design standards that Sharon was talking about, that the Board of Supervisors approved, and that's something we're going on. I know we have our community outreach with the planning for, for the north Glendale area. But we really need to think hard about what we're doing. So we can give clear direction at the outset to people like Mr. Kusravi. So he, when he's, number one, buying a piece of property, thinking about developing, he, in his mind, has a clearer picture of what's going to be permitted, rather than the zoning code, which says you've got three stories and you need 148 parking, maybe a setback, maybe no setback. That's what we need to do here. I mean, we're looking at the future. It's not just one building we're looking at today. We're looking at, we have a great opportunity to set the standards that are going to guide us for the next 50 years or so. And I think we need to really make it clear and not have it such a question mark until it gets to DRB and hear DRB say, "No, this is completely not what we want." All those conflicting opinions that the attorney pointed to about making it more homogeneous or making it more articulation and all this other stuff, I think that's where we need to go. Clearly, I mean, this is not going to, this is not going to get my vote, and you need three votes to overturn the, the appeal board's, the DRB's decision. But I don't know what to tell them. I don't want to say, "Just go away and make it smaller." Because it's not just them we're talking to. We're talking to developers from, from our community, current owners of our community, who want to do something with their properties to upgrade, that want to get you that family restaurant that you're trying so hard to get, that want to get you those, those nice shopping areas and everything else that you deserve up there in that part of town. And I think we need to really work on that. It's a challenge. It is a huge challenge. And I hope that we can, Mr. Hagani, with your staff and with the community's input, we can make clear standards and clear parameters so people don't come this far with two redesigns and close to two years of, of effort and countless meetings and countless hours of attorneys and your time and efforts and, you know, getting the lift and measuring 51 feet and all that other stuff, the balloons, the whole thing. We need to make it clear, we need to, to show what this community wants in clear terms. I don't like the word "compatibility." That's my problem. And I think we can tighten it down just a little bit more with examples, with suggestions, so we don't have to come this far. Any of us come this far and put it in the hands of four of us, you know, two years down the road.
Thanks to Mr. Najarian and Mr. Drayman.
Well, let me say, just for starters, that the reason, I think, Mr. Najarian, that not just you, but a variety of people are stuck, I think was the term, with the issue of compatibility on Foothill Boulevard, is that because Foothill Boulevard, for a couple of generations, basically, has been off this city's radar completely. And, and because a number of the buildings you mentioned predate the annexation of that area by the city of Glendale. And that's why I applaud this council for directing Mr. Hagani to begin the revamping of our city's zoning language with Foothill Boulevard and Crescenta Valley area. It is long overdue. I come at this with a slightly different perspective, maybe, than, than some of my colleagues, although not necessarily a different opinion, because I'm the only one up here who is a La Cressanta native. And also the first elected council member, first native La Cressanta elected to this city's, city council or to ever serve as mayor. So perhaps I bring a more unique perspective of this proposed project to the dais. I grew up on Mary Ann Street, La Cressanta, one block away from this project, proposed project. And when I grew up there, Foothill Boulevard was still lined with citrus groves, and that's where I played, in those citrus groves with all the neighbor kids and, and six siblings. And I remember very clearly, Mr. Figgins, yes, there was a Mr. Figgins who plowed those fields by horse in those days. I almost sound like you, Mr. Weaver.
Almost.
And then Mr. Figgins would walk his horse home to Mayfield Avenue, where he lived with his family and his horse. Let me also state that, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, anyone who would rather have a dusty dirt and gravel pit, forklifts and commercial trucks banging around from early in the morning, or a deserted property, rather than any, any kind of development on this site, is, in my opinion, not representative of the true spirit of a La Cressanta. That's just my opinion. However, the appellant's representative, Mr. Willis, his comment that the concerns of a neighborhood with a unique and well-established character as simply, I think he put it, "ethereal and philosophical stuff," does not help his client's case in my mind. You see, that ethereal and philosophical stuff makes for some, something pretty special. It's called quality of life. I hope that my participation in this hearing and that of my colleagues on this dais will not discourage appropriately scaled development along Foothill, along the Foothill Boulevard corridor, because it needs just that, appropriately scaled development. This is, or could be, in my view, a very nicely designed project. I reject the notion that this is a badly designed project. It is not. It is, however, not, in my opinion, for this neighborhood. Having said that, the fact that the Foothill Boulevard corridor is currently, and for the most part, in my view again, an architectural wasteland, does not mean that I can support even a nicely designed project, which is too large and too massive for this location. The fact that this area, the Foothill Boulevard corridor, is an architectural wasteland is a very sad fact, but not an acceptable justification for this particular design as currently presented. Based on mass and scale and compatibility, Mr. Mayor? Based on mass and scale and compatibility, Mr. Mayor, I will be voting against this project. I believe the Foothill Design Guidelines, which this council has made a priority, can't come soon enough. I'd also like to add, in closing, that several speakers have commented on the building at Verdugo and Broadview. And in those meetings at DRB, one of the reasons you have that project, in my opinion, is that no one showed up to speak in opposition to that project. And that has been, in the past, sort of the characteristic of La Crescena. We get labeled Sleepy Valley or Happy Valley. I am happy to see that La Crescena has become more involved and the residents have become more invested in the processes of the City of Glendale. I hope that a compatible, either version of this project or another design will come forward. And that basically concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll be voting against the project. Let me start by saying that I think the architect, as usual, did a beautiful job. I want to commend his work. I think this mission style is what I hope eventually Foothill Boulevard will sort of, will go to. So I think he's done a wonderful job, but the massing and the scale is over the top, in my opinion. I don't think there's, well, there are very, very few people in the La Crescena area, Foothill Boulevard included, that want this much square footage on your average lot. It's just way too big for the area. It's not compatible, it's absolutely not compatible with the neighborhood, and specifically not compatible with Foothill Boulevard. We're focusing, as we keep mentioning tonight, on the Foothill Design Guidelines. What I'm personally hoping is that, as one of the speakers, Sharon, I believe, one of the speakers, mentioned, that Crescendo Valley is one valley, it's one planning area, it should be locked, there should be no, Mike Morgan, excuse me, there should be no, he just held up his hand, remind me, there should be no, really, there should be no difference starting in La Canyada through unincorporated La Crescena, City of Glendale's La Crescena region, right into Tahanga and Sunland. I hope that someday we're going to see a beautiful Boulevard with lots of different uses, because there are traditional uses there that have existed for many years that I think need to continue. And obviously, new uses like family restaurants and this type of use. I mean, this would be an upgrade to the neighborhood, no question about it. If the developer feels that he can find medical doctors that would lease the spots and, or the units, then, you know, that's his, that's his feeling, and he should be allowed to continue. But it's just too big. And I, quite frankly, I don't understand why it continued on the same track, because in fact, it's been turned down literally at every level. There's certainly been enough neighborhood opposition, but it did, it did continue. And while there is some horrible architecture on Foothill Boulevard, I think we can all agree to that, as there are in other boulevards throughout America and throughout Southern California, there's no reason to continue it. Just because something's been built in the past, which, as Mr. Drayman mentions, may really sort of out of sight, out of mind if it was taking place on Foothill Boulevard, it was like there were no design guidelines and very little input from former DRBs. That is not the case any longer, and it hasn't been like that for quite a while. I mean, it's obvious that residents up there are interested in going in a different direction, and as elected officials, that's what we need to do. Follow the, follow the local neighborhoods and listen to them, and what they have to say is what we're interested in pursuing. So I will be voting against the project. I hope something is done on that parcel of land, because it absolutely needs to be, something needs to be done there. So I hope the developer can find some way out of the impasse. And if there aren't any other comments, then ready for a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move 9B2.
Second.
Are there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
And Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
And I just confirm, we don't have to do the negative declaration, one, because we're denying the project.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much for your input. Next, please.
We want to go back to oral communications. Item six.
I want to stay like a good trooper.
Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Why, we're gonna just hold on a minute while they clear the room.
Oh.
All right, we'll start oral communications. Abraham Odabachian, followed by Nick Franklin.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, city staff, and fellow Glendaleans. My name is Abraham Odabachian, and I've been present for the past three weeks and have concluded that the city council and staff put a lot of time and effort into examining city issues, perfecting our city, and making it a safer place for its citizens. Thank you for your efforts. The issue I bring forth today is speeding and not making proper stops on Mountain Street. I am a resident of northwest Glendale, and from what I can recall, there have been three auto collisions due to speeding, racing, and failing to stop. The first accident was caused when two cars were racing coming west to east of Mountain Street, when one of the two cars lost control and crashed into the fire hydrant, causing it to explode. The second accident was due to running a stop sign. The car went onto my neighbor's front yard, causing great amount of damage to the grass and the vehicle. The third accident that occurred was due to speeding and not stopping. The vehicle was traveling at a high speed and decided not to stop when an oncoming vehicle was making a left turn onto Allen Street. The car tried to stop, but was unable to, causing him to swerve onto the curb in front of my house, barely missing my room. Instead, the car crashed into an electric pole, causing damage to the cable. Now my question is, how can the city provide safety bumps on Mountain Street?
All right, thank you, sir. We'll respond, well, you know, if you've been here for a few weeks, we'll respond after oral communications. Nick Franklin, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Hello, everybody. I'm here.
We're gonna give you, we're gonna give you a.
Hi, everybody. I'm here on a very difficult situation. I'm here to voice a real concern, because we are having great difficulty, again, with our management company, who is ability first. And they have chosen not to listen. They have chosen to terminate Armas Stephen as our resident manager. We have been together for 15, 15 years. Armas has been everywhere with us. He has gone to the hospital with us. He has gone to funerals with us. We attended his father's funeral. And they have chosen to ask him to leave because he speaks up for what's right. He's not a passive person. He's a very aggressive person. You know that, because he ran for city council. And some of you kind people there know him personally as friends. So I would please ask you, when you have a moment, those of you that are personal friends of his, take a moment to talk to him, because he's in a lot of pain. But, but, we will not give up, because we love him. He is part of our family. And what is being done to him, while we all have to be compliant and follow directions, like, you know, that's, that's what we do in America. That's what freedom is. His, his voice is being silenced, because his voice is the right voice. Why do I say it's the right voice? Because he looks out for those of us that he loves and cares about. It's more than just getting a paycheck, you know? It's just, it's more than complying with HUD regulations, which are very difficult. As a matter of fact, we have notified HUD of this, of this injustice to this fine man. Because we've got a lot of problems in our building. We had a maintenance man there for a few months. He, he caused real problems. One of our residents almost died because of a comment that he made. You know what they did with him, with this other gentleman? They didn't terminate him, they transferred him to another, another building. So he's still employed, liability first. But what are they doing to Armas? They are saying, you must go. The city was here last week to inspect the building. It didn't pass. You know why it didn't pass? Because Armas had no, no say to let you guys know what's going on, because he's been asked to leave. And we're gonna do everything we can to still help him, because we care about him, because he's a very good and kind person, working under a very, very difficult situation, you know? We all have disabilities, whether we sit in a wheelchair, or we can't see, or we can't walk or something, everybody's a disabled in some way. And that's okay, because that's just how it is. But as disabled people, we have to work together. We have to make things right. Thank you.
Thank you. We may try to get a response for you, Mr. Franklin.
I would really, I really need you guys to help us.
Thank you. Margaret, Margaret Hammond, followed by Michael Arbuckle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, audience, and TV audience. My name's Margaret Hammond, longtime resident. Lot of things always going on in our city. Keeps, I tell you, you never get bored living in Glendale. First off, I want to make an announcement. Tomorrow evening, which is Wednesday, the Glendale Burbank Republican Group will be meeting at Clancy's at 6:30 PM. Dinner is available for $20. And our speaker will be Councilman Ara Najarian. So letting everybody know, you're welcome to come. Everybody's welcome, whether you're Democratic or non-whatever denominational, you're welcome to come to our, our group. And the next thing, one of the things that is coming up, which is very important, is, well, some people take their politics as religion, you know? The Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale invites you to the Summer Night on the Plaza, which will be Friday, July 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And I think it's one, maybe the only event that's held at the, at the City Hall Perkins Plaza, which is at 141 North Glendale Avenue. Free parking and just wonderful evening, hopefully it won't be too hot. We have, of course, live entertainment, silent auction, and a wonderful food tasting donated by about 15 different restaurants, the Minks, Billy's, Outback, Damon's, Olive Garden, New Moon, I can't read the other ones without my glasses, so, anyway. And plus, you can vote for your favorite photograph of my hometown, that was, that's, we hope, we have had for what, about the three, third year. And it is a smoke-free event. And I will give you these. If you would like to buy tickets, I do have tickets. And we'd love to see you. $15 if you buy them ahead of time, $5 for children. And it's gonna be, we've had a wonderful time the last few years. We really have. People buy out, as soon as I say we're doing it, we, they come forward and want to buy tickets. The other thing that's going to be a very important event is, again, America's Night Out Against Crime. And we're going to be having, I'm involved in the event down at the Pacific Community Center. I know many of you, I think there were six up till last week, and now there are eight. We have even more. It's gonna be really terrific. I mean, they're expecting, really, hundreds at each of these events. They've been planned, and we've had a lot of support. There are merchants and different people have come forward to help us out when we haven't had money to do things and, and support us. Because especially where we are, we don't have a homeowners group to back us. So the people in the community and some of the merchants have been very helpful. Johnny Harrison said he was very happy to help us and some of the other people around town. So it is going to be a terrific evening, and I hope, at least, if, support us by putting on your porch light. If you don't want to come out and visit with us, at least do that. And I want to say something about all the people that were here tonight. It's very interesting, when people have an issue, they're here. And I do want to say something about the design. I thought it was very nice. But when I go down to Lake Forest, one of the things that hits me as I get down further below kind of Disneyland is the openness, the feeling of how open everything is. And I thought, I was driving along and I looked at the buildings, they're set back, you know, the parking is in front, and of course, they have lots of land. Well, unfortunately, here, we don't have much land left in the city to, you know, build smaller buildings or whatever. I mean, our buildings kind of have to take in, it's, it's expensive to buy the land, is what I'm saying. So it, people do want to make the most use of their property when they buy it for that reason. So anyway, thank you very much, and I hope you'll attend all the terrific events that are going to be happening in Glendale. And this is our poster, which are, that we have printed, several languages.
Thank you. Michael Arbuckle, followed by Cynthia Dresser.
My name is Michael Arbuckle, and I've been asked to speak to you on behalf of the Ivy Glen Tenant Association. Ivy Glen Apartments is at 113 North Cedar Street in Glendale. And if you're familiar with that, you also know that as part of that property is the historical landmark, the Good House or Goody House, as some people pronounce it. And we, the residents of Ivy Glen Apartments, a complex for people with disabilities, wish to register a formal complaint concerning the mismanagement and willful neglect of this complex by ability first. A charity and HUD fund- complex by ability first, a charity and HUD-funded organization which has failed to provide adequate services in the maintenance of this plant. As has already been noted, that last Thursday, they fired the resident manager that had been there for over fourteen years. But besides that, another show of their mismanagement is that when they took over last July from Breckenhoff Management, they did not provide a maintenance man for over three months. And then when they did provide a maintenance man, this maintenance man had no skills whatsoever, did not even know how to fix basic plumbing, did not know how to even paint a building properly, who could even, he would come in with his family members, who were not, you know, people registered to do work on the building and have them do the work for him while he sat in the Goody House watching television and eating food. He would knock on the doors of residents, asking them for food, for money, and for alcoholic beverages before he would fix anything in their apartment. On top of that, he sexually harassed every female tenant. When these things were brought to the attention of ability first, they refused to have any meetings with the tenants. The one person they did call, they interrogated in such a way as to make that person feel that it was their fault and that it was their problem rather than their maintenance person that they hired's problem. And instead of firing this person or even putting within their jacket or their employment record that they had had such a complaint, they just transferred them to another building in another city. So they could continue their mis, they also, the same maintenance man, we noticed that from the time that they were hired to the time that they were transferred, things started to disappear from the Good House and from residents' apartments. And theft was definitely suspected. But again, ability first chose to ignore the complaints of the residents and did not even investigate these allegations, but again, just transferred the person to another building so they could continue if that indeed is what they are doing. As also a, an example of their mismanagement, there have been indications where the trash has been allowed for a month at a time to accumulate. When the manager, who as you know has just been recently fired, who used to stand up for the, uh, concerns of the residents of that complex, he was told that there was no money to pay the trash pickup. And yet HUD had provided money to pick up the trash. And yet, they were, he was told, there was no money to pick up the trash. So that same manager that they fired, out of his own pocket, went into debt with his own credit card and paid $1,087 for that same trash to be picked up. He was also told, when he told them there was a termite problem. And again, this not only affects the residents of the building because their apartment may fall down on them, but again, it also puts in jeopardy a historical landmark of Glendale, of the city of Glendale, the Good House. Because they're supposed to be taking care of that as well, making sure that it is kept up. And so when he called about the termite service, which has constantly come out and inspected for years and kept the problem at bay, they were, he was told by the termite company, there's been no payment. We have not been paid for months. And so we cannot continue coming out to do the service. Recently, they hired a person to come out to repair damage on just the, the front entrance way, which is termite damage, which again, happened because they did not provide proper maintenance. If they had provided proper maintenance, they wouldn't be now paying thousands of extra dollars. We just bring these to your concern.
Yes, sir.
So that you would direct us to the proper departments, if there's any department that has jurisdiction within the city for this, and thank you.
We'll have, we'll have an answer for you momentarily. Cynthia Dresser, followed by Mike Mohill, who I don't see in the audience, followed by Patricia Mendoza.
My name is Cynthia Dresser. Armaz has been a good manager to all of us. I'd like your help to bring him back. He's helped me when I've had problems in my apartment with a blind, certain things in my apartment, and I ask that you would please, please bring him back for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, and, uh, city council staff and public. My name is Patricia Mendoza. This is the first time that I come here. And the reason I'm here is because I would, I need your help, and I would like to know how, um, how my matter can be put in your agenda. My mother died October 14th of 2007 in a convalescent home here in the city of Glendale. She started getting treatment, uh, May of 2007, and she started at White Memorial Hospital, which is at Cesar Chavez. From there, I transferred to Cedar Sinai. Took care of my mother 24 hours. I seen all the mistakes that they did. They used her as a guinea pig, the abuse of Medi-Cal Medicare. I took pictures, I have proof, I have evidence. Um, I know that my mother died one day before at 10:30 PM. The convalescent home called me on a Sunday, October 14th, at 6 o'clock in the morning, claiming that my mother died at 5:00 AM. Not that they found her dead at 5:00 AM. They basically, she died at 5:00 AM. By the time I arrived over here, it was 7:00 AM. There was a police officer, which explained to me from the city of LEPD, what is the procedure. He spoke to me and my brother in between 7:30 AM and 10:30 PM. He was convinced it was foul play, conspiracy, and a crime, and that he would be following a police report. He made me call all doctors, which is just one, the doctor that discharged her from Cedar Sinai. And the reason she was discharged was because there were no more funds in Medi-Cal, so she needed to be out so funds can kick in within three months. She had, just went through big, major surgery. Um, so I had nowhere to put my mother. I was forced to put her in this convalescent home. It was the only one because she had an infection, because she was poisoned by the first doctor at White Memorial Hospital, and it's called an MRSA. This police officer asked me to call the doctor at Cedar Sinai and to call the doctor that saw her once at the convalescent home, who's gonna sign the death certificate. They both said they weren't gonna sign it. The next day, Monday, I went crying to the coroner's office in downtown. I spoke to the chief, and he said this happens when doctors know that there is negligence and it is their responsibility. He said that he can sign the death certificate, but then he changed his mind, and he said, why don't you come back on Friday? I went back on Friday, and he chose at 5:00 PM not to sign the death certificate. My mother's wishes was to be buried in Mexico. I couldn't do a private autopsy, but what I don't understand is that why wasn't there a correct police report filed as a criminal, as I was told? By that time, by 7:00, 7:30 AM and 10:30 PM, the coroner's office should have come and picked up my mom's body so they can do a free autopsy. Um, I am very angry with the city of Glendale, the convalescent home, the staff, the doctors, and the police department. It's been a year and a half that I've shown up four times at the police station. I've been completely denied and said, Ms. Mendoza, you're not allowed to get this report. You have to subpoena this report, and we're still under investigation. Just last week, I showed up again on Thursday, and they said that the report is ready, I can pick it up. I chose not to pick up the report until tomorrow because I know I'm gonna, there's gonna be days that I'm gonna have a migraine and deal with this because I'm carrying a big load. I do want to tell you all that I am human, I'm not perfect, but I don't function very well when I deal with people that treat me very sarcastic and arrogant and make me feel that I'm very stupid. I am a single parent. I was born and raised in downtown. I worked in a law firm for 27 years, did all kinds of investigations, and I do learn every day from different people, and I love to educate myself. But I want you to understand that the reason I'm here, because I am requesting and demanding to be put in the agenda, I need your help, and I will not rest in pieces until I bring justice. This police department should be, call their attention and, uh, give me, I deserve an explanation why they did a bad job. And this convalescent home should be shut down, and all those people should be fired. I'm not gonna rest in peace until I bring justice to my mother's death.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, there were a number of issues, starting with the gentleman who lives on Mountain Street. Do we have any ideas for him, Mr.?
Well, the request was for speed humps, you know, the traffic controls. Steve, we do have a process for that to be evaluated. We happy to provide that information to the gentleman. We have his name and number, we'll be sure and do that. Let me move on through here.
Ability first and our.
Ability first. You received, you and I received a brief summary on the matter that really touched on the issue of the manager. The items we've heard here this evening, I think, go quite a bit beyond that. So what I can suggest, I think we need to have the, the staff of Community Development and Housing do a more thorough review of the situation. Uh, the issues raised here this evening about the management firm's performance, I think, including in that, sitting down and interviewing some of the people who've spoken here this evening, and maybe other residents to do a more thorough review. We'll, we'll have Community Development and Housing do that, uh, beginning tomorrow.
And just so we're clear, basically, we still retain ownership of the property, and this is a company that manages the, uh, the facility?
It's a HUD-funded project. So I'm not exactly sure of ownership.
Yeah, we need to find it out.
But it's, they're operating under a HUD contract.
Right.
And we'll get you all the particulars on that, I'm not familiar with it right now. But, but clearly, there needs to be a more in-depth review of the whole situation. Issues have been raised here this evening, and we'll, we'll get started on that.
And then for.
Regarding Ms. Mendoza, uh, she has been informed that with proper identification, she can access the police report on her mother's death. There are responses to the issues she's raised here. Uh, I know one of those is that the matter of her allegations were turned over to the coroner's investigative unit. They, in conjunction with the DA, didn't see a basis for going further either with the investigation or filing charges. And of course, we can make her aware of at least the information on that that we have, and we'll be happy to do that.
Okay. Ms. Friedman?
Yeah, one thing that I forgot to mention earlier, I would like to have agendized a discussion of some minor modifications to the ordinance regarding campaign contributions and some clarification.
Okay.
Is there a second council member?
We need a second council member to concur.
I don't care.
I'm not sure, and I don't care as a confirmation, but.
Well, you know the amount of time we spent on this already. So, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Can I move to adjourn in the memory of?
Next, please. No, we have some new.
Oh, we have new business?
Next, please.
Do we have any new business?
I do. Mayor, I move. A Solomon. The dollars are the same. Finance. Oh.
And the finance director is authorized to issue a warrant and said sum payable to Khalid A. Solomon for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
Turn in the memory of the passengers' flight that went down in Iran.
Second. We are adjourned.